Uh, I think I got it.
Are you sure?
Thank you so much for your time.
Good, thank you so much for your time.
Are you sure you don't want to write it down?
No.
I would write it down.
Okay.
Just in case you forget. Yeah. No. Hopefully. Evening? Oh, for evening, okay.
So, can you guys practice yours out?
Oh, yeah.
What did you do?
Yeah, Bruce said, "Randy, never try this." You got the point.
The very challenging.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm late. Move around kind of slow now. Uh... Christina, you want to pledge a plea just?
Sure. Please stand.
Just a flag.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Campo. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next report of action taken in closed session. I read this, right? The, um, the board took action on the following students. Number twenty-one through dash twenty-two dash zero eight through twenty-one dash twenty-two dash zero nine. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved. And seconded by trustee Campo. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 So, we take that action. Pardon?
Mr. Simon, Dr. Simon?
Dr. Simon?
Thank you, President Tabarra. On a motion by trustee Rubio, seconded by trustee Campo, and a vote of seven to zero, the vote, the board approved a leave of absence for employee one-six-one-seven-seven-nine.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now I'll hear a student board presentations. First, we have Elsasal Middle School, Adeli Correll, Correlli, and Angel Barajas.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Adeli Correlli, and I am the leadership president.
My name is Angel Barajas, and I am a member of the leadership team.
PBIS. PBIS is a program used at our school to promote school safety and good behavior. PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. It is also a way to teach and promote behavior, expectations, and strategies. For the month of August, there was a total of two-hundred-eighty-two Spartan shields given out to students. Students who are responsible, respectful, and safe received them. For the month of August, Jose Ramirez, a seventh grader, and Diego Zuniga, an eighth grader, were the Spartans of the month, which means they received the most Spartan shields.
Accelerated Reader. At ESMS, there are one-thousand-ninety-three students. Since the start of the school year, students have read seven-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-three books. The total amount of time that students spend reading since the start of the school year is five-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-three hours and thirty-two minutes.
As you can see, this slide contains a further breakdown of the Accelerated Reader program at our school. This slide breaks down the hours during the day in which students spend time reading. For example, one-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand minutes have been read on weekdays from eight AM to three PM. The other data in this slide is information of the top five students with the highest reading minutes.
I, Elsasal Middle School educators participate in professional development. One of the professional developments is known as the learning walk. One of the goals of professional development is to support the district initiatives of constructive, meaning gradual... Sorry, I lost track. Release of Responsibility and Technology Interrogations.
Elsasal Middle School offers students extra academic support to ensure that all students succeed. Some of the academic supports at our school include ESMS, Every Spartan Must Succeed, Spartan Academy, after-school interventions, YMCA, ALD, Elpac Prep, and PBIS, Tier One and Two.
I, Elsasal Middle School educators participate in professional deva... Wait, I already said that. Sorry. Salinas Community Science Workshop is an after-school program that provides hands-on STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics activities for students. One of the goals of this program is to get students interested in STEM. Students are able to make things, repair things, and think, and take things apart. You guys are all welcome to join us if you guys would like.
During the first two weeks of school, leadership students focused on creating a welcoming, caring environment for all students. Furthermore, leadership students created posters with positive messages... Furthermore, leadership students created posters with positive messages welcoming students back to school.
Leadership students worked really hard on our first fundraiser of the year. The oldest funky major fundraiser was a schoolware fundraiser, which was very successful, and the students were able to raise over sixteen-thousand dollars in sales. Students that participated in the fundraiser had the opportunity to win amazing prizes such as a PlayStation four. Another amazing prize was a five-pound Hershey chocolate bar. This year, Oscar Hernandez was the winner of the five-pound chocolate bar.
On August twenty-seventh, Elsal Middle School hosted Club Brush during lunchtime. Club Brush provides students with the opportunity to join many different clubs at our school. Leadership students spent some time creating posters about Club Brush and posting them all over the school. Furthermore, leadership students worked alongside club advisors to create a Google Slide presentation containing informations of all the clubs at ESMS.
Club Brush was a big success. All the clubs got students to join their clubs, to Be Yourself Club. Advisor shown in the photograph is a club for LGBTQ students and their straight allies. This year, Be Yourself Club had the most amount of students signing up during Club Brush than any other year.
Spirit Fridays have been brought back this year. On Friday, students are allowed to wear a yellow or gold shirt, sweater, socks, or shoes. One of the main reasons for Spirit Fridays is to motivate students to show their school spirit. Students that participate in Spirit Fridays receive Spartan Shields. ESMS staff who participate in Spirit Fridays receive raffle tickets. At the end of the month, the raffle tickets, the raffle takes place.
During the month of September, leadership and PBIS worked together to have the first Spirit Week of the year. Spirit Week includes Disney Day, Pink Day, in honor of cancer awareness, Crazy Hair Day, Crazy Sock Day, and Spirit Friday. Spirit Week was very successful. Many of the students participated. Students that participated received Spartan Shields. I'm sorry, I forgot to change the slide.
On this slide, you can see leadership students hard at work creating ribbons to hand out to students. The photograph on the right shows the poster created by the leadership students after the first day of students writing positive messages during lunch. This project was a huge success.
During the month of September, leadership and PBIS. These are pictures from Spirit Week. As you can see, we have somebody with Crazy Hair Day and more students participating. Thank you so much for the time. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Angel Barajas, and Adelie Correlli, for your presentation. You guys look great together, well dressed up, good body language. Si se puede. Y chileganas. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just want to just reinforce what our students gave you, an invitation to the science community workshop. So this Saturday at ten a.m. at Elsal, they're going to have an open house. So if you're out and about and you want to come see what the students are working on at Elsal Middle School, ten o'clock.
Right. Thank you. Oh, heck, what happened? I just lost my agenda. I think I saw the name Arlie.
Arlie Lara and Jaclyn.
And what?
Jaclyn. Jaclyn.
And Jaclyn. Ranhel? I'm sorry. I lost my agenda right here, right now. It's weird.
Well, good evening, board members, and good morning, good evening, um, community members. Hope you're having a great day. Some of you already know me. My name is Arlie Lara. I'm currently a senior at Elsal High School, and this is my second year representing Elsal High School. My freshman year, I was class president. Last year, I was ASB treasurer, and currently, I'm serving ASB president. So here with me is Jaclyn Ranhel, and I'll give her the mic so she can present herself.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. It is an honor to be here today and represent my beloved school that I consider my second home. My name is Jaclyn Ranhel, and I am a senior. My past positions consist of being class vice president my freshman year, class president my sophomore and junior year, and now I am currently serving as ASB vice president. Our agenda for today will consist on four main points. We will be discussing academics at Elsal High School, the ways in which our college and career readiness team is preparing seniors to stay on track with their post-graduation plans, Elsal athletics, and lastly, one of our favorite components of being back on campus are activities. We will highlight how Elsal students promote school spirit in a safe and positive environment and go over our upcoming events.
So I'm sure you guys are familiar how our board presentation is divided into. First, we will begin with academics. So to begin here, we have our attendance percentage rate, and we consider attendance to be very poor, especially this year after coming back from online. So therefore, we wanted to demonstrate to you, board members, and also our community that we have freshmen with a ninety-five percent attendance, we have sophomores with a ninety-four percent attendance, and we have juniors with a ninety-three percent, and seniors with a ninety-four. So as you can see, we have students with a range of ninety-five, and we hope that by next semester, our goal is to increase to a ninety-seven percent.
Our incredible staff is committed to involve not just the students in our school activities, but also the community members, and most importantly, our parents. Our community liaison, Ms. Rachel Torres, has been a part of our school for forty-five years, and some of the things that she's in charge of are parent slash family contacts slash referrals, home visits, youth in transition, site or district committees, school activities, and weekly virtual parent-on-campus meetings.
So at Elsal High School, we are very proud of the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Team that we have. We have a variety of staff members and teachers involved in this. The main purpose of this team is to recognize students who have positive behaviors and to work with those students that need more help in improving their behavior. So the team offers incentives for those students who show the three trait, which is responsive, respectful, and safe. And those students who need more help, they are offered with intervention. And to compensate those wonderful students who do show those traits, we offer Trojan ticket. And in those tickets, they're, they have a different color, and the color represents their price that they will obtain. So we have from gift cards to Elsal merch that we offer to the students. And this year, this past month, we have had seven-hundred Trojan tickets redeemed as of last week.
This summer, several of our Trojan Scholars took part in an international competition, the Bio Design Challenge, where they worked to combine art, design, and biology to reimagine a more sustainable and equitable future. The Biotech Palatero Kart, which is what they created, composed of all Elsal High School students, and they won first place. Students were formally recognized by the City of Salinas at the city council meeting. And one of the things I'd like to emphasize is that they went up against a team from USC, and they were victorious. So, yeah, congrats to them.
So as a student, I am very proud to be here at Elsal and to be provided with a lot of support, not just from counselors, but from staff, and most importantly, teachers. So the college and career team, Dr. Gutierrez and Mr. Chides, are continuously working hard in providing students that support, especially us seniors. So as of now, our campus is scheduled for thirteen college admissions presentations and many more on the calendar soon. They vary from virtual presentations to in-person, and the number of students who continue to participate continue to increase. In addition to our school having College and Career Application Support Month, we have writing workshops with, for the UCs and also CSUs that are offered for our students. We will begin, we will begin a week in which students, seniors, can sign up for Application Support Week. That's from October eighteen to the twenty-second, and they're going to be offered not just with support, but also with snacks and fun activities so they can get motivation during that week. And on the other hand, we have our school-wide CCR activities, and this is for all students. So from grades nine through eleven, they focus on building awareness of high school A through G requirements and monitoring progress on those requirements. And they also set goals, and seniors are preparing to apply college and financial aid by learning about different systems of higher education and understanding the importance of applying to financial aid on time.
Okay, so this is a chart that demonstrates the amount of students who have applied to UC schools over the past four years, and it shows how many have been admitted and enrolled. And as you can see, if you look at 2016, we had forty-seven total applicants. As opposed to the year 2020, we had a hundred-and-seventy-five students apply. And then you can see that seventeen of those students from 2016 were enrolled, and fifty-eight of the students from the class of 2020 were enrolled into the UC system. And I just want to say that I'm so proud of this program because our high school is the only one that has this, and it helps us a lot. And, yeah, I'm really excited to begin college applications because I know that I will have the support that we need.
So we also have the CSU application. So we have, it says 2016, we have a hundred-and-ninety-four applicant totals and sixty-five enrolled. And compared to 2020, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-seven students who applied, and eighty-eight were enrolled. So as you can see, over the years, the numbers continue to increase. And I know for a fact that the numbers will continue to increase because our CCR team is working really hard and motivating us seniors to continue a post-secondary education. And not just our counselors, but also our teachers are doing that. So we really appreciate teachers and also our community that is here.
And now moving on to our activities. So we will first begin with presenting our amazing ASB leaders this year. This year, the Associated Student Body has fifty-one amazing leaders, which include student council and our leadership class. These students are excellent role models, and they're always ready for whatever challenges thrown at them, and I'm really proud of this group of students because we work really hard together, and we've gotten super close over the past three months. Some of our students are not just great role models at Elsal, but also in the community. A lot of our students are involved in organizations such as the Salinas Valley Dream Academy, La Cosecha, Girls Inc., and many more. Not only are they providing service here at school, but also outside of school. Diversity has been key these past months.
So moving on to our Link Crew team, we have currently fifty-three active members. So we begin our year with our annual traditional Link Crew orientation, in which our team offers incoming freshmen a tour of our campus and also enrichment activities to get them out of their comfort zone. So we understand that online learning was a difficult process, so our students understand our seniors and juniors, do care for our freshmen and our incoming sophomores. Therefore, we created activities that would help them get out of their comfort zone and get them ready for the next transition, which is high school.
This is our new activity that we began this year. Our live morning announcements are presented every morning from eight a.m. to eight oh five, and it is a time for all students to learn about what events, resources, and games or rallies are happening that day or week. The morning announcements are conducted by two ASB students each week. The students have rotations every week in order to showcase different personalities to our students at Elsal that maybe they can relate to. The rotation also allows our ASB students to practice their public speaking skills and also gets them out of their comfort zone. During our morning announcements, we have weather segments, sports segments, academic segments, college and career readiness, and really fun, fun segments like joke of the day or staff shout-outs.
So this year, after a long draining period of being at home, ASB has brought live events with, during lunch, with the help of Coach Gil. So the amazing part of this is the bands that come play to us are Elsal alumnus, meaning that they promote success, dreams, and giving back. So with our live music events, we have, always have had a success, and our leadership students have promoted the use of masks even on these events. So our Trojans have followed the district guidelines. So on August, we have Proyecto Equis. On September, we had DJ Vito. And on October, we have Banda los Nuevos Sauceras. So we bring a band every month.
Elsal High School continues to promote school spirit during lunch every Friday. Our tradition of having rallies consistently has resulted in a major participation of students that we've never seen before. We are proud to say that our Trojan family is stronger than ever. We have had the opportunity to bring all grade levels together through team-building games, and I love that we always make sure we follow the COVID-nineteen guidelines. The most important thing we want to show you all is that our students, show our students is that it's okay, and it's, it is cool to be part of these games and participate in school activities. Our goal is to recover the fifteen months that we lost online with fun, safe, and inclusive activities.
So Jamboree was a memoir event for students and for most of us, as we can agree. Fifty, after fifteen months of being in quarantine, many of our students demonstrated that they missed school events. So we can clearly and properly say that we, Elsal High School, was the loudest and most spirited school that had a positive environment, an environment in which all students felt included, as you can see in the pictures. Some of the hashtags that we used this year was hashtag eight underscore town and the heart of Salinas, which you can find on Instagram.
And now we will transition into our athletics. So during the fall season, we have a total of three-hundred-and-fifteen athletes as of last week. Football, we have a hundred-and-one. Girls volleyball program has forty-two girls. Cross-country has one-hundred-and-fifteen runners. The cheerleaders have thirty students. Girls tennis has twenty-two girls, and our girls golf team has a total of eight girls. So here are some pictures which are demonstrating our awesome fall athletes, as you can see. And those are some pictures of our cross-country team. This is a new activity that was developed this year with the help of Coach Gil. So on Mondays and Wednesdays, we have indoor soccer games, and we have a total of eight teams that consist of seven players. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have three-on-three basketball games, a total of seventeen teams that can have up to five players. And we started this during like mid-September, and we plan to end before winter sports start. And in the early spring of 2022, we will plan on hosting indoor volleyball and dodgeball intramurals. We also plan on organizing staff versus students games periodically. And, yeah, this is something that we're really excited about, and we like to see that a lot of students go out and actually watch these games.
So the upcoming months of Elsal High School will be very busy, and we will be creating a lot of fun activities for our students, but also our community members. So as you can see display, we have Dia de los Muertos, which will be host in October twenty-nine, 2021, in which students from our class will be presenting their altars, as well as leadership students will be having a rally to showcase Dia de los Muertos. Then we have our homecoming, which will be November first to November fifth, in which we'll be hosting different rallies during lunch. And also, our theme for this year is decades. So each class was assigned a different decade. Something that we started doing new and that we all leadership students wanted to do was have an annual giving back. So we hope that each semester, we can give back to our community. For this semester, we thought of giving back to our farm workers. So we plan to give back to essential items to our farm workers November seventeen, and that would be before school. And then And then we have our annual food drive, in which all school-wide brings different cans and we have a competition of which class brings the most cans.
Finally, we would like to conclude with our mission statement for this semester. Our mission is to provide students, staff, and most importantly, our community with support, enrichment, and unification in order to get through the challenges that we face. The ideal goal is to come together as one and form an undivisible bond.
So I want to thank all you board members, staff, and community for being here and listening to our presentation. Hope you all have a great rest of your night. Thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, first of all, under this mask, I got a real big smile because I'm just happy to be here. I'm happy to be here at, here at your home. We always have the meeting somewhere else and we always hear your reports, but to be here and to have all of you here is great. It's just great. So thank you, everybody, for making this, this happen. You know what? I just had a quick question. I saw that chart and Mr. Garcia will tell you over there. We've had some, some good talks about student achievement and Superintendent too will tell you. But I was looking at the chart for the University of California and the CSU and I was just wondering, and I saw the numbers and, you know, I see that it going up, but there was school A, school B, and school C. What, what did that mean? I didn't understand that.
We just took the labels off the other schools in the district.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. I, I, okay, all right. And let me see. And the difference between admitted and enrolled. Admitted, I, they said, yes, come on in. And then enrolled means they actually went?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that what it means? Okay, I, okay, all right. That, that was, that was it. Okay. All right. That, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So just before you two leave, also, our board clerk asked if, when we visit schools, if we can introduce the school site council presidents. I don't see Ricardo Cabrera here. Do you see him, Mr. Garcia? Okay, so we'll do a revote next time. So Mr. Cabrera is the school site council president here at Alisa High School. And I also wanted to thank you for your presentation and let you know that when I was principal here, I danced on this stage with students. It's time for Mr. Garcia to dance on this stage with students. Thank you.
The public heard, heard it, so.
That's right.
Give the people what they want, Garcia. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that, the goal statement. That was very, very nice choice of words. It was really, really nice.
No one has done that before.
Thank you. It's very, very good. To the point. It's good.
Keep up the good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Individuals desiring to address the board. I'm going to read a statement on behalf of all the board. Okay. Thank you, board members, for being present. And thank you, members of the public who are here tonight to listen and to participate in our board meeting. Welcome to everyone. Blue speaker forms were available outside for anyone that is here to speak on, to the board on any agenda item, any agenda item, or those matters within the board's jurisdiction. The board has a number of important matters in our agenda tonight that we need to discuss and resolve. Therefore, I'm going to hold to our bylaw, our board bylaw number 9323, time limit for public comment on each agenda item of up to 20 minutes per agenda topic with a maximum of three minutes per speaker. We will start the clock when the speaker is at the microphone. I think the clock will be up on the projector?
It should be, yes.
We are going, we are going to start with those speakers who are here to comment on agenda topics. For those topics that are not on the agenda, the board will limit total time to 20 minutes for all non-agenda items. Superintendent, please call on the first speaker and the second speaker so that the next person is also ready. Please come forward in this order to address the board and state your name when you get to the mic. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, President Tabera. So we have five slips tonight for public comment. And two of them are connected with the agenda item on naming of the field at Elsasal Middle School. And you've received multiple inquiries potentially to name the school after Joe Cap. So both of the people here tonight, I'm just going to introduce them. And then with the board's consent and direction, I'll ask them back in two weeks to give a full presentation on the idea with what the signage would look like, et cetera. So tonight, we have Dr. Ignacio Ornellis, who is here with us, and also the daughter of Joe Cap, Ms. Gabby Cap as well. So they're both here, they filled out a card, but they're going to concede their time so they can speak next session as an agenda item. Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you for being here. Great. So next up, I have Rose Dixon.
Good evening. Last month, Mr. Burns said, "We've all experienced a lot of trauma since March 13, 2020." The trauma existed before then. It has come to a head and been illuminated since then. Once again, as Peter Williams so eloquently said a couple of weeks ago, "We are treating the uncomfortable symptoms that have existed for years, but were recently brought to the community's attention." Rather than eradicating the deep systemic causes, dress codes, SROs, and digital citizenship trainings will not fix the problems caused by systemic inequities. Without support for mental health, students cannot thrive. A record number of students are reporting anxiety, depression, suicidal thoughts, and we are expecting everyone to just do their best to get through the day. What is your plan for this? Without quality nutrition, students cannot survive the day. Would you eat the lunch provided by this school? Without safe, physical spaces free from overcrowding, students cannot let their guards down enough to feel safe to learn in class. I'd like to encourage the board to visit any site and do their best to navigate the halls from one end of campus to the other during a passing period, as many students do multiple times a day. Without consciously implemented anti-racist policies and actions by the adults, our students cannot have any hope of learning from our example. When students are suspended from minor dress code violations, but nothing is done when a student makes a racist comment in class, it is clear where our priorities as a district lie. Alice training is proven to cause trauma, not avoid it. Never mind the fact that the protocols are not even implemented when we do have lockdowns. Don't waste your money. When we have one psychologist for over 3,000 kids, we shouldn't be talking about spending $50,000 on metal detectors or $5,000 plus travel expenses on Alice training per site. I'm going to skip some of what I wrote last time. If you'd like students to act like prisoners, then please install fences and metal detectors. If you'd like them to learn how to be responsible, respectful, and safe global citizens, then create spaces that allow for opportunities to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have Blanca Miranda.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Superintendent Burns, President Tabera, and trustees, board of trustees. I'm here to welcome you into the Alisa High School. Thank you for making these changes and for coming into different schools and getting to know your communities. That is, to me as a parent, why I didn't say my name, Blanca Miranda again, and I'm a proud parent of Alisa, a Alisa student. I'm also part of the school site council for, for Alisa. I'm an alternate, since there's, since there's no president, I'm not going to call myself president, don't worry. But, but, because I tend to do that. Okay, so I wanted to say that I would like to ask you as well, your support for during lunch. We would like to see more, more people supporting, supporting the students getting lunch. Everybody's getting lunch, but there's not enough time for all of them to get their lunch on time. Some of them are eating in a rush. And many times, the, the teachers are coming to help. So I know it's also the teacher's lunchtime, so we would like to have more support with that. As a parent, I also would like to have better lunch. I'm not saying that one they are having now is bad, it's really good. But I mean, different, different choices, different options. It seems to repeat a lot. My son hasn't complained because his burger, so he won't complain about that. But I know it's, it's something, something that I, I would like to have that been improved. And I know the food service is going to speak about today, so I hope they are hearing that. And I would like for you guys to support us with that. I'm also a part of Padres Unidos, like I said, part of the school site council, and I'm currently your vice president of the migrant program at the state level. And with that said, I would like to say that I'm proud and an honor to represent our parents. And I'm here just to say that we would like to have better lunch. We would like to have more support, like more people supporting the, the staff, so all of our students have adequate time to eat during lunchtime. Thank you very much. Thank you again for coming into our school. Welcome to the home of the Trojans. And I would like to say as well, thank you for thinking, taking in consideration of renaming La Paz Middle School. And it's an honor to have one of our Hispanic leaders, especially since we're in the Hispanic heritage days. Thank you for that. Good, good evening, everybody. Good evening, community members. And thank you for allowing me to have time to speak before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last one is Maggie Powers. Did Maggie leave? Okay, so that's all we have for individuals desiring to address the board.
Now we have number six presentations, comprehensive school safety plans, and active crisis training.
So let me start first with the safety updates and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Baltazar Sabah to introduce our guest as well. So I don't know who has the computer that's hooked up, but if you can put up the slide, the, the attachment for safety updates, I just wanted to give the board a quick update of some things in progress here. It's on the agenda, so I don't know if you can pull it up from the agenda. Okay, so skip it. So I'm going to pull it up on mine and, and you can see it on yours as well. So just, just to update the board, since the last time we had a safety update, so we have added some private security to all of our campuses to provide some external presence for our campuses. So several people have reached out and said, what's that about? It's just for additional safety and external presence. The schools are utilizing the text-to-tip application as well, which is an anonymous way for students to report incidents or, or if they see something to report, if they're fearful about something. And those go directly to the administration so that they can then address them. We are evaluating the upgrades to our current surveillance camera system. There's new technology that includes the ability to zero in potentially on weapons. And so that's being evaluated for implementation at our schools. We're also looking at installing some window film on the glass, which provides additional protection from any type of intruder so that the glass would not break, per se. Based on previous conversations, we have, we are doing research on hardware to detect weapons upon entrance into the schools. So the average cost of that is about $30,000 per unit. In, in that file tonight, you also have an article on the value and the lack of value in using the, that type of device. So you take a look at that article as well. We're continuing our training with an area of active intruder. So we're going to hear from Mike Kimball here shortly on the work that they do. We've done extensive training and preparation for active shooter and, you know, fortunately, we haven't had to implement any of that and let's hope we don't in the future. We currently partner with Salinas PD and Monterey County Probation, so we are setting up a meeting here in the next week or so. Actually, it's on October 19th with all of our principals to talk about how our schools interact with the legal authorities when there's a crisis or an incident so that we know how each other can play together well on the playground, I should say. So it's just a way for us to work together so that the law enforcement knows what we do as educators and that we know what they do when they have to arrive on campus. And we're continuing to partner with community agencies to support mental and social-emotional support. So you see those come up periodically in the MOUs and consent. So we have an extensive amount of resources into mental health and social-emotional. And realistically, it's never enough. So we're continuing to look at additional ways to support young people. So those are some updates. And at that point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baltazar Sabah.
Thank you, Superintendent Burns. So at the last board meeting, the Board of Trustees approved the proposal for active crisis training by Kimball and Associates. And so tonight, Mr. Kimball is here, as well as our Director of PPS, Dr. Alaman. So Mr. Kimball, if you'd like to come up. And I hope the board had an opportunity to look at his presentation and he's here tonight to answer questions that you may have. Dr. Alaman and I will be working with Mr. Kimball to look at how we will phase in the different training for both staff and students as we progress throughout the year.
And you can take your mask off at the mic if you want.
What I've learned is that there's four universal truths about students. They all want to feel safe. They want to be loved. They want to be heard. And they want to be known. And the Salinas Unified School District has done a phenomenal job in cultivating students and schools. I know this to be true because my kids graduated from Salinas High. I currently have children still in the school district attending schools. And I'm a graduate of the Salinas Union High School District. Our program is designed to support, develop, and cultivate along with the school district. So the kids do feel safe, heard, loved, and known. Our program is called the Active Crisis Training Program. And there's two whys about it. The first why is easy. It's about compliance, ed code, Senate bills, and other codes. The second one is the most important one. It's about further development and cultivation of safety. What we know in human beings is that when they feel physically safe and cognitively safe, they perform better, they retain more knowledge, and they're able to deliver more when it comes to testing and that future endeavor we have for all our children to accelerate to higher education. So we're here to continue that cultivation and development of safety in our schools for the students, the staff, the schools, the families, and our communities. What we presented to you was a very comprehensive program. It was really in-depth, more than we've ever presented to you before, but something that we've done all along for different school districts in the area and through the Monterey County Office of Education. So it might be easier if we take a balcony view and look at how we develop this through the lens of the four audiences. And this is how we developed your matrix and your packet. Those four audiences are the adults, the staff, the students, and two specialized audiences, your transportation department, and your campus safety and security. If you take a look at the screen, this is a graphic of a potential one-year rollout on the left-hand side. It's an overview. And on the right-hand side are four documents. on the left-hand side. It's an overview. And on the right-hand side are four documents that are required annually as a part of your CPPS or California School Site Safety Plans under the Safe Schools Initiative. We fully support and help you in the development of those and the ongoing, because it's a living document, in maintaining those documents. Our, since you've had a chance to read our proposal, I'd like to pause and answer any questions you might have, after which I'm prepared to take a deeper dive into the modules, should you want to have more information. Any questions?
I don't think there's any questions.
Actually, um...
Yes, ma'am.
President, there was a couple of trustees mainly interested in this presentation tonight. And I would like to ask them if they are having something to ask you beforehand?
Sure.
So feel free. At this moment, I don't think so.
I don't think there are any questions. No, go ahead and proceed. Yeah.
All right. So we have, I was asked to present to you some of the various modules that we have. And so we have Module One for Safe Schools, and this is our, under the program of Active Crisis Training, this is our Active Shooter Program. And one of the things that is very, really important to know is that our work with the National Association of School Psychologists in recognizing the importance of cognitive safety as well as physical safety. And one of the differences with our program is that we customize our programs to the school districts we work with. We're local, we're embedded here, we're available. We, we sit on the school safety committees. We still have our children in the schools. In Module One, please take a moment and look at the screen. Those are the outcomes that we desire in Module One. And Module One is designed to set foundation for the building block style of training that we conduct, so that people can really absorb the skills acquisition piece.
Can we ask a question? Can we ask a question?
Yes.
Can you give me some examples of Number Two? You say identify several options for survival during an event, and you said that you sit on our school safety committees and that you have knowledge of our schools, I would think, our school sites. Could you give me some examples of Alice High School? What, what would you propose?
Yes, President, let me, let me move forward to the slide that has the options. There we go. And so these are some of the options when there's an active shooter on campus. But what we hope to do is also to teach the prevention piece, the recognition of what happens before an active shooter with the five phases of development before an active shooter actually happens, so that we can recognize it, so we can set up behavioral assessment teams with the schools, and we can actually implement and put it healthy systems into place that will help people emotionally, psychologically, and physically in advance of having to use any of these techniques. These are universal techniques that reside within any comprehensive system nationwide. And these, these will work on any school campus.
Well, the examples that you gave were, what, Columbine, and I think another one. And those schools, I, I could be wrong, but those schools are not minority-majority schools. So in which case, how would you, would you do things the same? Or would you do them differently for a majority-minority district like the, like our high school district? Because we don't operate the same way, you know?
So what we're talking about is the human being, the person. We're looking at human factors.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, too.
And everybody's a human factor. So this all started back, as you can see on the slide, with duck and cover, which we, which is the reason I use those two historical examples. Those historical examples were not for the demographics of the school so much as they were for the lessons learned on what works and what doesn't work as far as options. And so the Columbine is a demonstration of why duck and cover doesn't work. And it was in the library at Columbine that people utilized duck and cover when they could have escaped. They had somewhere between 45 seconds and a minute and a half to escape. And all of them, all of them, could have survived that horrific event that were in the library had they chosen to just leave the area. But yet, they chose to reside to what, the only thing they had, which is duck and cover. So it really goes back to the human being. As a human being, Lawrence Gonzalez teaches us from Deep Survival that we're, we always get a lot of information. According to University of Cambridge, we receive anywhere between eight and 11 million bits of information every single minute. And that includes all the sensory perceptions. University of Virginia teaches us that we only retain two to three million bits of information. And what, the way we're wired as human beings is we are wired for survival. And so our brains put things into category. Now, what's important to know is that in time of survival, in time of fear, in time of threat, due to the hormonal-induced adrenaline that enters our system, our brain functions begin to shut down for survival. And so we only have what's called brain scripts. The blood rushes out from the internal organs into the extremities, and we can't access those filing cabinets to operate in the normal way that we operate. We only have brain scripts. What does that mean? We only have what we prepared for, nothing more, nothing less. If we didn't prepare, if we didn't have options, if we didn't get permission to use the options, then that's what we have. And then people default to what they last remembered, or to what was last ingrained in them. So that's why we want to keep it fresh in their minds, so that they have the brain scripts to access and to be more aware. And we start off with situational awareness and understanding situational awareness. Some of you are looking at Virginia Tech. And Virginia Tech is an example, when you break it down, and I don't have the slide up there, all the classrooms of, the classrooms that used duck and cover only had the major significant losses. They're, they're the ones that played dead, hid in place, and the shooter returned only to kill them. The other classrooms exercised the options, and that's where we had a significant amount of people surviving that horrific incident.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Kimball, let me ask you, what other districts throughout Monica, Monterey County-wide are probably looking into establishing metal detectors in campus, or they have had already? And what had been the community response to it?
From my knowledge, I believe Monterey Unified School District has looked into them. I don't think they've implemented them. I believe Gonzalez, and I think those are the only two that I really know of that they're looking into them. There's a lot of discussion throughout the county. There's discussion in Greenville, there's discussion in King City, and Soladad, Gonzo, you know, and in the smaller school districts, and Spreckles, there's discussion. But as far as actually implementing and using metal detectors, I'm only aware of, of those that are really looking into it is potentially Gonzalez and Monterey Unified. And I think Monterey Unified is tabled, as far as I know.
Okay, so in reality, within our Monterey County districts, none of our districts yet has implemented the metal detectors.
Not to my knowledge.
It's just pure conversation, searching, researching into it, but nothing so far has happened.
As of my last discussions with them, not to my knowledge.
Yeah, so our research is the same. There's nobody local, nobody in the tri-county area. Mr. Kimball's work with us is to train staff, so he's not here to recommend metal detectors or school resource officer. He's not here to do any of that work. He's here just to say, these are the kind of training things we're going to do to make sure we're ready if there is unfortunately a crisis. And they've, they've worked with us previous years. And part of that was Alice training, and now that's evolved beyond just active shooter into being more crisis-aware and, and ready. So that's what, that's what his work with us will be.
Yeah, I'm familiar with, with Mr. Michael's experience years ago at the MCOE. And I got to say something. I'm proud to have you here tonight, because not just because of your businesses that you bring to us, but also because you're the son of one of our school principals in this district, Mr. Arlo Kimball, your father.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'll cheer up.
I've walked this stage many times with my dad.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes, sir.
He was here at Alice High?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I got in trouble with him one time.
You did what?
I got in trouble. I used to sit over there in the, in the main, in the main office all the time, and I used to go like this.
Can, can we move him along?
Sorry.
Okay, let's move on.
I got in trouble once, too.
That's Mr. Kimball's son?
Yeah. Would you like me to continue with the presentation, or do you have more questions?
Keep going, no, keep going.
So what we know is that there's a lot of components for law enforcement response and first responders. And I, as you know, many of you know, I come from a first responder community. I served here in the community as a first responder. So we also have that background and knowledge amongst our 25 instructors that work with us and our consultants. And what we know is that for the first six to eight minutes, the first responders won't even know that there's an issue here on campus that needs your assistance, especially in a, in an active crisis situation or an active shooter situation. So it's really incumbent upon us as a school district, and as parents, and as educators, to ensure that the, the rest of the educational staff and the students have the tools and the knowledge and the permission to do what they need to do until the first responders can get here. And six to eight minutes, if you haven't experienced it, is an extremely, extremely long time. And then now you add on top of that the response time. So six to eight minutes without, before anybody even really makes the first call to 911, even though sometimes that happens really quickly, there's overall, the national average is somewhere between 12 minutes and 18 minutes for law enforcement first responders to arrive. And what we know is these instances are over with, and usually nationally, the FBI tells us and Department of Justice tells us they're over in less than three minutes. So the importance of having the options that I presented to you on the screen, and the ability to make the decision which option is best for you, what is most appropriate for you, how are you feeling that day? You know, did, as I get older, my knees are bothering me more, my back's bothering more, so I have to adjust. I may not be able to do all those options, but there are options that I can do. You know, and, and as human beings, we come to school during the week to work, and you might have had a bad night. Your kids might have kept, you might be tired. Or you might be feeling great, and so you can help yourself and help others. It's all up to you to make those decisions in the moment, based upon the information. We know that the best place to be is not even on campus when these things are happening. So if they can evacuate and get off campus and get to a rally point, get to somewhere where maybe first responders are at, other people are at, that's the best place to be. But if they're near the incident, then there are other options that need to be exercised. And so what we know in a crisis is people don't remember codes, they don't remember acronyms. So we speak to plain language. And so, again, as I mentioned earlier, as on the screen, you must decide the best course of action. And the power of permission. The power of permission works with our natural instincts. It works with the natural flow. Usually when we have hormone-induced adrenaline, we get the three Fs, flight, fight, or freeze. And we want to work with the fight or flight. We certainly don't want you to freeze. This is the time when you need to get out, get away, or take action to protect yourself. Maybe locking yourself in a room, or barricading, or hiding temporarily till you can move. The power of permission saves lives. It also creates psychological resiliency, and helps reduce casualties. A lot of people use the word resiliency, and they don't understand that in order to have resiliency, you have to build capacity. Resiliency is having the capacity to survive emotionally and physically in the aftermath of an incident. So what we're really building here is capacity for life skills, not just here, but beyond here. And if we build the capacity for situational awareness, we can avoid a lot of these things. And we also use the four tenants of building trust. And those four tenants are making sure that we give kids a voice, that we are neutral without judgment when we're listening to them, that we show them respect, and that we build those trust bridges in the moment. And what this does is this empowers staffs and students and visitors and clients, because you have people coming on campus all day long that are, they're clients, somebody delivering the papers, somebody delivering mail, somebody delivering water, delivering food, maybe, you know, checking your PG&E, you know, air, gas lines or electricity. There's always somebody here on campus, you know, as far as visitors. I spoke a little bit to brain scripts and the ongoing need for ongoing practice and rehearsal. And up there, you see that in Deep Survival, Lawrence Gonzalez, he also wrote Everyday Survival and did a lot of research with doctors and psychologists on the study of the brain and the importance of having those brain scripts. We only have what we practiced mentally and physically, nothing more, nothing less. And crisis rehearsal is a mental rehearsal that can really give you the edge for things. And, and we can, of course, talk to that. And on one of the abstracts that I gave you, on page two on the drills abstract, it speaks to the crisis rehearsal. We also work with students and staff to understand and recognize what first responders are going to do, so when they arrive on scene, how to work with them. And then we take that beyond in our other trainings, working with your emergency management coordination or incident command systems. We'll be actually delivering those classes through Monterey County Office of Education. And we also offer them here, just like we also offer the classes on developing your school site safety plans, the CSSPs, through Monterey County Office of Education. Brings us to Module Two, and I'll try to speed this up a little bit more for you. Module Two is our skills acquisition. So the first module is building foundation, answering questions, getting people comfortable with the idea of the program. We have that ready, we're almost ready to deliver as an online asynchronous piece, which saves you money and saves you time. And we're going to have that online asynchronous piece available to students and staff, depending on your decision on which choice of route that you'd like to go, which path you'd like to go. In our Module Two, Skills Acquisition, you can see the outcomes there that include the three As for situational awareness, the crisis rehearsal, the autogenic breathing, the options, and appropriate options for the threat level. And then we practice those options. And we start off with situational awareness and the three As of situational awareness, which is to have awareness, to be able to make an assessment, and to be able to take action. If you have the, and awareness is a choice. And if you have the proper awareness, and you're coupled with the knowledge, you can make the proper assessment to take the proper action for you in the moment, and maybe for others who are counting on you. There might be others, your, your leaders will pop up, your school leaders, your ASB leaders, and leaders you don't even know that you have, that are lingering out there in the student body and amongst your staff. Crisis rehearsal, autogenic breathing, another very important piece. In order to open the neural pathways, we have to have autogenic breathing. And that also allows us to process to a deeper level when we're in crisis. It also helps us in the recovery piece. And it's very, very healthy for us, just even on a daily basis. I could tell you, having been in several crises myself, with my life threatened as a first responder, having been injured, that, and two years ago, having a heart attack, the doctors told me that I directly contributed to my own survival by utilizing autogenic breathing because it created vasodilation. So that's another thing, another life skill that we help to teach in the class and how to use that. When you look at threat levels, there's a number of options that the President asked about. There's the assessing, there's the escaping, evading, resisting, the lockdown. So a number of options with, that reside within the options itself. And then we have on our final module, which is this, connecting the dots. And connecting the dots is, it's a way that we do a scenario in person. It's a tabletop session that we, that people explore a variety of options, explore the vulnerabilities of their school sites, they explore how they can work with each other, they practice emergency management, they practice the, the incident command systems, and they identify shortfalls. So we help them to develop a SWOT analysis that they bring back that is kept confidential. We don't take it, you take it. You take it back to your school sites, you present it to your principal. And with the SWOT analysis and that very confidential information, you can make improvements or plan for improvements in the future. The no-cost programs that I was asked to speak about include Stop the Bleed. We host, and some of you may have attended, we host every two years, except for, because of COVID, we're off a little bit, an active shooter conference. It's the largest one on the West Coast, and I host it right here in Monterey Peninsula. We had it certified for educators through the College of Teachers. We had it certified for educators through the College of Teachers out of San Joaquin County. We have it certified for nurses and first responders, so they get their Peace Officer Standards and Training credit and their Standards and Training for Corrections and the nurses' credit for higher education. And we, so we have it in a forum where everybody can come together and have conversations and network and hear from those stories, those lessons learned from those incidents nationwide. We're working on having people from Stoneman Douglas come to talk about what happened to them, having somebody from Virginia Tech. Last year we had people from Santa Monica Junior College here in California, we had San Mateo here in California come down and speak to what has happened in their schools. We have access to San Jose, we have access to Gilroy to talk about what happened in their incidents. Other no-cost programs are provided to you for the incident command system that all educators and all staff, actually, all staff are required to have, and that's the Incident Command System 100 and for administrators, the 300, that's provided free online. And that is in furtherance of help when we actually get to the connecting dots tabletop and when you're actually have, maybe a school-wide drill or an actual incident. Now I'd like to open it up for any further questions.
I just had, I think you mentioned that, you know, and I don't know what it was at Combine, what the racial makeup is, I don't know what it is, but I know what we have here. But I think you touched on something on the F3 and just to make sure, the response is universal with the kids.
Yes.
Wherever this happens, you know, I know that, but I mean, I don't know if the audience knows that, it's, they're universal responses by people that don't know what to do or, you know, or don't have this education or training.
Yes, we're looking at human factors.
Right.
We're looking at biological factors, we're looking at the brain science, the human brain. So we're not looking at gender, we're not looking at ethnicity, we're looking at the person, human factors.
Right. Any other questions? I'm done, yeah.
No other questions?
No.
Is this one of those, you want to think about it?
No, see, we already contracted with Mr. Kimball, we just wanted him to present for you.
I just wanted to make a comment that just like everything else we do every day, we have, you know, a house built and you have the electric election come in and check it, the city signs off, make sure everything is safe, cars, seat belts, I could go through a laundry list of stuff that we do every single day and we just take it, or that's the way it is and it's good for you and something like this. I don't want to be alarmist or anything at all, but you know, this is something that's good for our students, hopefully it never, ever, ever happens here, never, and, but it's good to have, you know, they also work places, you don't know what happens at work and if it happens at work, what happens with the training they get here is transferable as they grow into adults, they'll know, they can reflect back and say, if this happens, this is what you do just automatically and build that into them. And so I think, I think it's good, it's just good. So thank you for being here, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I forgot your partner's name over there from the peninsula?
Dr. Gerald Traynor.
I can remember him, thank you, yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kimball.
Thank you.
Next presentation, can we hear from Food Services Report?
Thank you, President Tiberia. At this time, I would like to introduce Veronica Muñoz and Pedro Molinero. Veronica is our Manager of Fiscal Services and Pedro is our Assistant Manager. Veronica and Pete both manage 10 school sites, so they are at the district level and they manage 10 school sites. They have multiple staff under their supervision and today we are going to provide you with a food service update for 2020-21. And with that, I will turn it over to Veronica.
Good evening, board members and the educational community. I appreciate you having us here. So today we're going to have a report for the food service, from the Food Service Department for this school year, and I'm, I've been on board with the district since March, I am learning a lot and my assistant has been helping with the learning process and the curve and getting to know the staff and being able to communicate with everybody and what their needs are, and we are still continuing this process. To begin this report, I'm just going to give a summary of what we're going to be going through today. We're going to be discussing the distance learning meals that were served in 2020-21. In addition to that, the online menu that we have posted on our website and the district, not just the district website, but also the school website. Meal pattern guidelines that are set by the California Department of Education. We will also discuss the National School Lunch Program versus the à la carte. Many of us don't know what that means and there'll be a little bit more insight on that. Meals served in August and September, and so you can see the difference of the meals being served, the food waste recycling that is now being implemented into our schools slowly, but needs to be implemented by January 1st of 2022. And in addition to this, we'll also go over the pre-three-year spending plan. On this slide, you're going to see the meals that were served by month in, during distance learning in 2020-21. You will see in July, we had almost 10,000 meals being served, but there were only three sites that were actually serving the students. And as you notice, as we started to open up more of the sites and serving, we had a dramatic increase of the community participating and picking up their meals. It started to slow down in, between December and January because we were on vacation and there was only one meal pack that was given out and that was due to the lack of staff interested in working during that time. And also between, and then you'll see the change go back up in February. Now there's another dramatic change that you will see between March and April that is also due because of the spring break. We did go ahead and serve one lunch pack meal and it was only being served at one site. Again, that had to do with staffing. In between April and May, you'll also see another decrease, but that had to do a lot with the hybrid learning model where we had distance learning and we had in-person students. At that time, we were serving the community just one hour and we weren't, the only school that wasn't serving the community was Montoro. Between May and June, you will see an increase of participation. We were open at all of the schools for summer school and that was very difficult to do because we were really, really short staff, but we made it happen and it was very successful. As you can see, we did increase the participation of students. On our next slide, we're going to be discussing the online menu. The online menu is driven by a software program that's approved by the USDA called Healthy Pro. It takes our nutritional guidelines and it applies them to the software in order for us to be in compliance when we're serving our food to the students. The menus are created under the software. The dietitian assists, facilitates the menu production and the quality of food. We go ahead and also assist with that process. Pete helps with actually creating the menu and we make sure that we follow those particular guidelines. And as you can see up on the top, you'll see the nutritional facts, that the teriyaki bowl that we do offer the students, all the nutritional facts like the carbohydrates, the calories and all of the other intake. In addition to this, I wanted you to also know that what we are working on is with the cafeteria managers, we would like to go ahead and start implementing new recipes where we can go ahead and have the students taste the recipes, but as long as it falls under these requirements. So that's something that we will like to start to do in November and potentially the last week of October, but it's, it's a work in progress. Standardized menus are clear across all of the different sites. The menus are the same, they're standardized as it says up there. And what we do also is depending on the availability of the food and the product and the supplies that we have, it may change. So one school may have yogurt to be able to do the parfaits, while another school may not. And that has to do with the vendors and the way they're able to distribute the different products that we're having to go through due to COVID and they've also informed us. I have like our different vendors contacting us, letting us know that there's certain things out, they're unable to supply us because of lack of drivers and the manufacturers and so on. So on the online menu, we have it on our district website and also on our school website. It's a little app, a little icon that says school menu. When you select that, you'll go ahead and be able to select your, not just your school, but also what you would like to look at the menu. It's a snack, it's lunch, or it's breakfast. On there, you're also able to check to see what month you're looking at, if you also want to see it either monthly or weekly. You can also have a selection where you can do a, build a menu. So let's say you may be diabetic or you're just really watching your carbohydrates, you can go ahead and start selecting different items to see what is best for you to eat. In there also, there are filters for allergens. So if you're allergic to peanuts, you can select the peanuts and then everything on that menu will cross out anything that has peanuts in it and then you'll be able to select the item that you'd like to eat. Dire-Terr preferences, it follows along with building the menu as well, where you're able to select, let's say you want gluten-free items, you can select gluten-free items and it'll go ahead and cross out anything that has gluten in it. The menu, you can also have the option to print either weekly or monthly. It also allows you to translate it in any language, there's a dropdown on there as well. There is an instructional video that we do plan on working with Marcos Cabrera to distribute to the students so they can have access to that, so they can learn how to use a menu. In addition to that, there is a sidebar on the menu where we can give some information and I plan to work with Healthy Pro to put that on there so it's easy also for the parents to access. Our next slide is information from the California Department of Education in regards to the meal pattern guidelines. We have five components that we must give the students. We need to give them a component of meat, fruit, vegetables, grains, and milk. On this chart, you will see that there's a difference of how many cups per day we need to give our middle schools versus our high school. So we, for the high school, we end up serving more than we do the middle school. So when you see under vegetables, dark green, red and orange, beans and peas, starchy, other additional vegetables, and also reach, the additional vegetables to reach total, it all falls under vegetables. It's not its own component. The components that I had listed are the main ones, which is just the vegetables. These other ones have to do with the type of vegetable you like, like dark greens could be like spinach, broccoli. The red and orange can be anything like carrots or tomatoes. The beans and peas are the same, starchy could be potatoes, could be corn. And the additional vegetables can be anything that is actually implemented into the meals as like, let's say for pizza, the tomato paste is considered one of those items. So just to give you examples of what those categories are. And this is, falls under for the whole week, but in parentheses, you will see that like for fruit, the students should have half a cup per day, but for the whole week, it's two and a half. On our other chart to the right, these are daily amounts based on average for a five-day week and the minimum calories that students for middle schools should have on a daily basis. And again, there may be one day that they may have more than others, but at the end of the week, it should actually total up to what, 700 times five is? Or the 850 for the high school. Saturated fat, it has to be less than 10% for both, middle and high school. Sodium targets, they are different, so less than 1,035 milligrams for middle school and less than 1,080 for the high schools, and zero trans fat. On this slide, I wanted everyone to know what the difference is between the National School Lunch Program versus the à la carte. The National School Lunch Program is a state requirement and it is also free for all students under the Community Eligibility Provision, which is SEP, a lot of you know that acronym. And in this, we actually get reimbursed from the state for the meals that are being served. À la carte is not a state requirement, we do offer it to the middle schools and the high schools. These are items such as snack items that we give them, it's not a full meal, which does not consist of all of the components, fruits, vegetables, the milk, and the grain. Students do have to pay for these à la carte items and they do also have to follow the nutritional guidelines. There have been concerns about food shortages during the lunchtime. I want to let you know that for the CEP, the SEP, we do not have any shortages of food, there's always plenty of food and that's what the students go through the cafeteria, through the speed lines. There have been concerns in regards to the shortage of the à la carte items, which have to do with their favorite item like chips or was it the flamas? The flamas. It has, the reason why we go ahead and have only a certain amount of items on the cart is so we can encourage the students to go through the speed line where they actually get their free meal and it has their five components. It's healthier for the students. Next slide. I'm going to discuss the August and September meals that were served for breakfast, the change, and then also for lunch, and then for the à la carte. So I'm not sure if you'd like to look at the screen, but from between August and September, there was an increase of student participation and I believe a lot of it had to do with the fact that many students, like in the middle school, they were coming in from the elementary and they had no knowledge that their meals were free and they can go through the line. So we started to promote it, we asked a lot of the administrators to make these announcements in the morning so they were aware. So there is an increase for the free breakfast. And for the lunch, it's the same thing, we did increase as well, we increased 9.57% with the exception of Also Cell, which is a minus 3%. At that location, just to let you know, there's no à la carte that's being sold there because we would like for that school to continue to work on getting their students to participate with the free lunch program. And then in August and September, there are some variances in the à la carte sales, there have been some decreases in those and that, and those are shown in red. But in contrast, when you look at the lunch, the students are actually grabbing, sorry, not grabbing, but they're getting their lunch through the speed line. So that's something that I'm really happy to see that the increase is occurring. So there is a variance of 0.3%, but we increased to 9.57% of students participating overall. I also wanted to inform you that we did also implement the snack program in September. I don't have that information up, but I can let you know that for high schools, it's about 350 students participating a day and then 175 students for the middle schools Food waste recycling is called the SB 1383 is a law in California for organics waste reduction. It requires the schools to properly sort food to compost collection, educate the staff and the community, reduce and recover edible surplus food, and have a nonprofit food donation partner in place. And this, and it needs to be in compliance by January 1st of 2022. We don't have a nonprofit food donation partner in place, but we, what we are doing at the schools is called a share table. And so when the students that say they pick up their whole entire meal, but they don't want their milk, or they don't want their apple, or their sandwich, they go ahead and put it on a table where another student who would like to have it can go pick it up and they can have that. can go pick it up and they can have that, that sandwich or that fruit or vegetable. Implementation is being assisted by the Salinas Valley Recycles and Republic Services. They're coming with their staff onto campus and assisting in educating the staff, the students, and myself, the whole entire cafeteria staff as well. This began in August 23rd at Also Cell, La Paz, and Washington. Working on scheduling the rest sometime in November, with the exception of Also. They are looking at either December or early January due to their staffing. So that'll, that's in the process. What Salinas Valley Recycles and Republic Services has done is have given us the actual bio bags, because there's specific bags that we need to use during this process. It's not just the regular plastic liners that we use, bins, signage. And they walk around for a week with the students and get them really involved and excited in reducing food waste. The state approved our three-year spending plan where we would like to have our cafeteria repairs and upgrades. We will be having food service equipment upgraded as well, our flooring, our painting, the walls. We will also like to convert the Alisa High Teacher Lounge into the prep room so they can have more space, because they're extremely limited at the moment. And it would make them just work a lot faster and more efficient. We would also like to purchase electronic menu boards for not just the menu that is on our National School Lunch Program, the free meals. But we also would like to do that for la carte to kind of speed up the lines as well. We're also looking at outdoor food kiosks for the schools. I began with Also Cell, because I know there's a need of being able to speed up the process. And, and we are actually waiting for something to show up to the plans. And so we can discuss with Virginia to see if it's something that actually can happen. The replacement of the hut that we have with the food kiosk and an additional one up against the wall where we have some of our regular food carts, our green food carts. And at this moment, I would like to thank my entire staff for making it possible to be able to feed all of the students that we do. And for their dedication to coming to work and always having a smile and helping everyone. I thank you all for your support. And do you have any questions at this moment?
Any questions? Just now.
Hi, thank you for your report. It was a great report. You mentioned, you had one example of yogurt that sometimes that is part of the menu, but because of vendors may not have that item. Or some sites do and some don't. How do you make that decision, who gets and who doesn't?
I don't make the decision. What happens is all the sites enter their orders into the system. And then the vendor determines what actually gets delivered. So it depends on how soon. In the week they actually put their order in determines on whether they will get the item or not. Sometimes all schools won't get that specific item, like the yogurt. Then they'll have a lead time, which means maybe they'll receive it in two weeks, which is kind of like a back order. And sometimes the managers decide to proceed with the order or decide not to and go with a different vendor to see if they actually can get the item sooner.
And if I can, if I can just add to that. I think specifically this year, it's been more of a challenge due to the high demand and low supply. But in past years, that hasn't really been an issue. And that's the reason why we went into, you know, using standardized menus. But this year, that has been a challenge. So our site managers are clear that they are to place their orders with plenty of time to make sure that we follow and we implement the items that we have on the menu on a daily basis. But that's not always possible due to the demand of the items.
Second question. I know some of our school sites kitchens are more modern than others. And we understand that's normal. However, in some of their sites, the food looks more appealing than others. So I've had the opportunity to do some site visits and visit the cafeterias. And so I've had the, you know, the opportunity to notice that. So how can we help that? I know, like I said, some of our schools are older. I mean, we had the, we walked Rancho and I mean, it's beautiful. I mean, their rice cooker is huge and all this nice stuff they have there. It's beautiful. But yet there's some other sites that don't have that. So when you walk a course into Rancho, I mean, everything looks appealing. You just want to, everything looks fresh, everything looks great. And although the food might be fresh everywhere else, it doesn't look as fresh because, I don't know. I don't know how to explain that. So I don't think it's very appealing to also the students. Do you understand what, kind of what I'm saying?
It's the presentation of the items and where it's actually located. So it has also to do with not just the presentation, but the facility. Is that what you're stating?
Yes. Do you agree?
Yeah, so that's something that I'm actually working with Anna, along with Pete. We're going to be walking. I have been actually to all the sites already more than, let's say, three times. And actually, I've been here, I've been one of the staff members that actually has been helping at Alsa when we have been short-staffed, along with Pete. Same thing with the office staff. We, for certain reasons, we've had to come out and help. And we were very pleased to do that. And, and yes, that's actually helped us check the area to see what it is that needs improvement. We will be working also with the cafeteria managers to see what kind of improvements they need in their kitchen equipment, even like I mentioned, even like the walls, the settings. We, I already did a walkthrough at Alsa with Emiliano, the cafeteria manager, to see what needs he wants and for that, and his vision for what would be best for the prep area to help them and be able to present, you know, the food better at this site. And I'm just talking that about Alsa, because that's what, I know it's one of the, the main sites that really need an improvement.
And the last slide that Veronica just shared with you, that's a $4.6 million plan. So what we did is we went ahead and we were only allowed to carry a three-month reserve in the Food Service Fund. So right now, we have an excess of 4.6. So what we did is we, we put a plan in place, letting the state know that yes, our kitchens do need to be upgraded. And, and we submitted that plan to the state and they approved it. They too understand. And like, as Veronica mentioned, right now, what we task the managers at the site level is, provide us with a list of what you, you know, you, you think your needs are. And then once we have that, then we'll go in and we'll talk to them, discuss it with them, walk it with them, and then from there, we'll go ahead and evaluate. What are the true needs, right? We'll have to prioritize. We only have 4.6 million. And then from there, we'll go ahead and we'll put a budget in place. And of course, that work's going to take, you know, and the state knows that it's going to take us two years to implement those changes and upgrades in our kitchens.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
On Rancho, who decided what was going in their kitchens?
So.
I don't have an answer for that.
I can answer that. So that, that actually goes, that's years back, even before my time. So they normally have a planning committee. So anytime we create a new space at any school site, what we do is we get those parties involved, right? So say, for example, when they're planning at Rancho, when they're planning the cafeteria, we make sure that we have the staff that we need that's knowledgeable. For example, our, our site managers, our site staff, our food service manager. And at that time, we had a different manager in place, a different facilities. So it's really the planning team. We have different planning teams depending on what space we are creating.
Okay, because I know when I toured Rancho, they haven't even used some of their machines, ever.
Yes.
And they've been open for three years now.
So, so I'm in conversation with the principal right now to possibly try to use some of those, some of, some of the space to, for our students, right? Because he's very interested in implementing some type of a culinary program as well. So, you know, we're in conversation about what would that look like? And is that possible? Because we do have the space and we do have the equipment. So that's a conversation that we just recently started.
Okay.
I have a question. I, I guess several years ago, I was involved with this organization that trained board members about nutrition. And one of the, one of the results from that was that we, we stopped having a lot of sodas at our board meetings. Well, we still do, but not as many as before. And I think that also translated to, to school sites. But, you know, one of the things that I thought was interesting as you were, as you were giving your report was, one of the things we learned about was these three or four different types of medical conditions that students can have. And, and the organization that trained us, they were culturally competent. And they did provide a training regarding our Mexican-American community. And the only, I can't think of the fourth, but I can still, I can remember the three. Diabetes, heart disease, and morbid obesity. I can't think what the fourth one was. But, and I know that all four, and the three that I just mentioned, there are the four, they kind of require a different, a different type of, of, of food intake. So that you won't have as high a level of diabetes or, you know, you won't have as high a level of morbid obesity, or your arteries and your veins won't be as plugged up, you know, based on whatever you eat. And so I'm, you know, I said, look at your online menu. And I'm, and I'm looking at Healthy Pro and standardized meals, an online menu. And then I'm looking at National School Lunch Program versus la carte. I know that when, are you, our students used to apply for free lunch. And I remember a long time ago, there was even free lunch when I was in school too. That there was a field, there was, is there, would, could a field be developed or could something be developed where a student could get a personalized menu or personalized food allocation based on their heart disease or their level of diabetes or their morbid obesity, and I can't think of the fourth. But is that, is that something that we could do based on the technology that y'all have access to? When the kids go through the line? They would, you know, if they try to get a candy bar, eh, you know, they can't do that. They can only get a salad and/or, you know, whatever. You know what I'm saying?
So currently, I think Mr. Tabera.
We have that ability.
Right. So it's not, I mean, it won't ask us not to sell a certain product to a student. But the Healthy Pro, the menu will actually monitor us, but for the week, right? So for example, when the menus are, when they're putting the menus together, they look at it for the week, meaning that we cannot have more than so many calories for that week. So if our max is $700, I mean, $700, 700 calories a day. But say, for example, on day two, we end up serving something that's 800 calories, we're going to have to reduce that in future, in a future day, right? Within a five-day.
You understand what I'm getting at? What I'm getting at is there's some way that we assist that student and his family to make sure that their health is proper so that they can learn better. Because one of the things that came out of that meeting was, well, too much soda, you know, there's too much sugar. And if you have a food, you know, a balanced, a imbalanced of food, then you can't learn either. And so, you know, if there's some way that we can manipulate what, you know, with parental permission, et cetera, and or doctor permission, you know, to help a student pick the right kind of food to eat, they become better students, right?
Yeah, so it's a great question. I will say that it's more of an education thing for parents and students. Maybe something we can flag on their health form when they fill it out and maybe reach out to them and provide additional education for them. There's no technology we have right now that says you have diabetes, you can't eat this.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at.
So when you, when you go up to the la carte, they say $1, $2. They don't say, what's your ID number? So there's no way to match that.
So it doesn't go further?
No. So that, that's.
If we can get to that place, that would be good.
I think, I'll be retired by then, but I think that technology is coming one day where they'll walk through and say, no, you can't have that kind of meal.
But in our current system, if a parent is interested and they want to know what the students have purchased, that's la carte, we can go ahead and we can provide them with a report. So we are tracking that students are required to type in or provide us with their ID card. And that information is being tracked in our system. So if you're interested in knowing what your kid's eating for the day, for the week, for the month, we can give you a history of that.
We could, we could really have a lot of healthy students like that.
Good question.
Any other questions?
That was good. Thank you.
Tabera?
Yes, I'm sorry. And trustee Ocampo. Trustee Salzberg and then trustee Ocampo.
Okay. So when we think, so I just want to share that I was actually trustee Felice and myself that went to Rancho and had a good walk in the cafeteria. And they're really nice and showed us all this nice equipment they had. So they have this huge pizza maker, right, there. And so we were just talking and saying, you know, we, the district orders pizza outside. Is it possible, I'm just, we're just thinking outside the box, where you hire staff to make the pizzas there and then they take it to other school sites versus buying pizzas outside? Just a thought.
It's something that we can, that we might be able to do at that school site, but.
But to deliver to out, to the other school sites.
As a centralized kitchen, yes. And we, you know, they are, they do exist. It would be wonderful if we had a centralized kitchen, because we would be able to offer different options and get them delivered to the school sites. But that's something that I don't think the oven is big enough for, for the amount of pizzas that are provided at the school sites on a daily basis, right? But that's something that we can definitely look into, maybe for Rancho San Juan and maybe another school, right? Definitely something that we'll look into. We'll make a note of that and we'll have that discussion. Thank you, trustee Padilla.
Trustee Felice is willing to come in and make the people.
I'll sign him up.
He's got to get certified.
I'd like to ask, Veronica?
Yes.
When you're talking about a three-year plan cost, how much are we talking?
It's 4.6 million.
Okay, for three years.
Yes, to spend within the three years.
And when you're saying rebuilding floors and cafeterias, what, which are those cafeterias? And what school sites?
So it's going to be all across. We're going to go ahead and have inspections. We're going to walk throughs and see what their needs are at the sites and actually prioritize them according to their needs. As I had mentioned before, Alisa High is one of the top ones that I am focusing on, where I would like to go ahead and expand their kitchen just a bit and by giving them more prep area and storage area for their food, because they're very small with the amount of size of students that they're feeding. In addition to that, the food kiosk, so instead of having the small little carts out, outside, we'd like to have those bigger food kiosks where they can store their food, easy access, being able to display the food for the students so they're able to actually select their food prior to even walking up to the window. So that way, it could also speed up the lines. But we will be going to the different sites to prioritize and see what their needs are. And prior to that, we are reaching out to all the cafeteria managers to ask them what their needs are as well.
As you, as you, as you see, and also Peter as well, the cafeteria of the Alisa is very small, right? And when you said you're going to expand it a little, which way are you supposed to do it?
So have you been in the teacher's lounge? That's if you're facing the cafeteria doors, you know, going into the inner court. On the right-hand side is a, is a door, and that's where the staff lounge is. That area is what we would like to go ahead and convert into a prep room and also put shelves in there. We've actually measured the area for the shelves. It's just a matter of when we're able to actually begin the process. The flooring was done and I believe the walls were as well, correct?
Yes, during the summer.
So you're, you're hoping to use the teacher's lounge and convert it into an extra?
Space for the staff.
Space for the cafeteria.
Yes.
So we will no longer have a student, a teacher-student lounge, a teacher's lounge.
So we're working with administration to find a different location for the teacher's lounge. Because the teacher's lounge that they currently use now is right next to the kitchen, right? So it just makes perfect sense to be able to expand and use that space for the food service staff to do the prep and, and store some items. And then we'll find a different location for the, for the staff lounge.
That was my, that was my concern, you know, because our, our teachers are so used to being in that lunchroom and, and is it like their private space? And I think they deserve that space. And as long as they were looking and thinking about them.
Definitely.
How to put them in one side from the other, I think it's, it's, I'm all for it.
Yeah, definitely.
So I'm always advocating for whatever is right for the staff and students. So I like that. Secondly, one thing that you were saying, and I agree with all the trustees tonight, there have been a lot of issues in the past, you know, about servicing, okay? The food quality. And we also have in about, I would say about three months ago, I have a couple of teachers, remember Alvarez, Salinas High School. teachers from, remember Alvarez, um, Salinas High School, and parents from Valles Unidos that are also saying, "Why are we giving our students every single lunch on a weekly basis, the same lunch? There's no variation." And, and I, I went online, as you mentioned, you know, you have online, and what I've noticed is that I saw September and October, and it's the same, the same menu, you know? The same menu, from October to September, September to October. So they're having muffins, they're having, um, cinnamon rolls, they're having bagels and cream, and so we're talking about, eighty-seven percent of our students are Hispanics. The other ones are, you know, other, other diversities of minorities, and I agree that we have an issue about diabetes, cholesterol, and all that stuff. And I do understand, Anna, and Denver, that we don't have the capacity, technology yet to find a way to identify our students that are dealing with, you know, diabetes. Uh, but maybe if we were to do a survey, student-wide, you know, in all the school sites, and find out exactly what can we do to help them to eat better? Because I, if I'm, if I'm a mother, and I'm sending my son to this school, and I see the menu, and you're counting the calories that we cannot go over, or, 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 or down, um, I will get bored of eating the same stuff on a monthly basis.
Yes.
So my, my, the people that are addressing to me, they're, they're begging, the board, it is about time to start changing the menus. And I think we all care for the nutritious, we all care for our kids. And, and now that we have a brand-new manager on board, Veronica, and then, este, Pedro Molinero is behind her, hundred percent, I think it's just a matter of working together to create a much better menu, healthier menu. And I remember, Mr. Burns, you and I went to another district, where was it? Concord?
It could have been Concord.
Do you remember?
Five years ago?
Yeah.
And I personally visited the cafeteria, and I was amazed to see the quality of food that they were serving. Yeah, we're talking about 30,000 students in that school district. We only have 17,000 plus in our district. But when I compare, and please look it up, Google it, when I compare the menus that we serve in our district, and compared to other district menus, we're really in the bottom, Anna, in the bottom. So we need to continue to work further to better serve the nutrition of our kids.
Definitely.
And that's all about, you know? You feed a kid with healthy food, what do they do? They don't fall asleep, they learn. They learn. And that's my interest, to make sure that when they come here for breakfast, we don't give them a concha, we don't give them a cinnamon roll with a glass of milk and an apple, when they can get burritos, you know? Papitas, chorizo, burritos, ham and eggs, burritos. And, so, so that's what I'm shooting for. You know, now that you are new, and Peter's behind you, and Anna is also behind you, I can see you're doing the presentation of food services, which is always behind you guys, okay? So maybe, looking into this for the sake of students, I think so. And the teachers will be happier, because they wouldn't have a hyper student in, in the classroom, but a well-fed student that is willing to learn. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, trustee, I ask.
I don't have a question, mine is, uh, more of a comment. The quality of the food, I would have to say, it's excellent. Um, I've been at the different schools, visiting the lines to make sure how efficient they are about the concerns from parents that they are not getting the meals, and they're pretty efficient, they, they have ample time to go get in line. Last time I tested it, it was about, uh, five, between five and seven minutes, by the time you start the line, and by the time you get your food. Um, but I never tasted the quality of the food, and today, uh, we had pozole, which was very good, pozole and bionico. And I don't remember ever being in high school, eating pozole or bionico.
It was an option.
So, I mean, to, to me, I, I mean, if, the quality of food is good, I mean, if you give me enchiladas and pozole every day of the week, I'm, I'm fine with that, but that's just my experience.
Anyone else? I liked it too. It was good. Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I was, I was happy to hear that you said that there are gonna be some changes on there. I think you said that earlier, and I caught that in, and thank you very much. And I, I do have to agree with what you said for the, you know, for the breakfast, and I did see the menu, and I, I, I see what you're saying. Um, I, you know, I don't know what, you know, the budget is for that, but, yeah, I, I, I think we could certainly use a change here, there, there are other options, I mean, um, and I don't know how all that plays into the, uh, into the amount of calories that are given to the student in the daytime either, or what you can take away and add, uh, or change, uh, but, you know, I, I think we should explore some of these things, and not have like, I don't know, like the same thing every single day, you know, so, um, yeah, thank you.
We've been waiting for these changes for some time.
Yeah, exactly.
Him and I, you know, him and I were very closely, five years ago, with Mr. Burns. And since that time, things are moving along well, that tonight, I can see the results. And there's hope.
Yeah, we're getting there.
There's hope. So let's do it for the family.
Yeah, we're getting there. I, I, you know, we have, we have an issue with having to reconfigure kitchens, they were built in different time periods. Like, I think the kitchen here at Alisa was, what, built during the mid-sixties? And that was a different population of student? And, um, and, uh, versus Salinas High versus Rancho San Juan? So I think, you know, we have, I mean, I think we, as a board, probably should look at, you know, we should look at, you know, uh, how we distribute food properly, and, and whether or not the facilities we do have are gonna be able to accommodate students ten, fifteen, twenty years out. You know, because Salinas is not gonna get small. I, I kinda don't believe the numbers, I'm sorry, demographer, I, I don't believe that Salinas is gonna decrease, I think Salinas will increase in size, um, in the future. And so that's something that maybe this board or another board will look at. Just now.
Before, before I, we end up this presentation, you mentioned a while ago, Veronica, that the staffing, due to the staffing, we're having problems, okay? Uh, in what school is those? Just Alisa, or?
No, it, it was all across. We had, um, shortage in staffing all across. Uh, we just, uh, let's say, we've just had to come and assist at Alisa more than we have at other sites, but we have been helping at, let's say, La Paz, I've been there working, uh, what other site? Washington. Um, so it's been all across where there has been a shortage. Uh, we haven't, um, we've been posting, uh, ever since we've had these vacancies, we just haven't had any applicants that wanna fill these positions, and as soon as they actually qualify, they do all of the boarding processing and vetting between HR, then we go ahead and interview and select, but even our interview pool is not, not big at all.
Yeah. And there was another concern of mine, that I saw, um, a documentary of a Monterey County school district, uh, that is struggling with janitors, with cafeteria employees, and also with supervisors. Um, and what this district is doing, or will be doing, is reduce the minimum requirements, like, not high school diploma or G D equivalent, so they can really hire more people. But they also are discussing to hire them not for five and a half hours, but for six. So, and San Diego, there's the same issue right now, they're increasing the hours per school site in cafeterias. So it's, it's, it's beginning to look around, you know, so we need to get ready, Anna, you know? The board cares a lot that, that we need to provide those employees that are short-handed, you know, for every school site, so every cafeteria can run smoothly. And if we need to, we need to pay half an hour more in benefits, I think it's about time to do it. I think it's something that we need to discuss about it, Mr. President, because those employees are not working in our district, because they're working for four and a half hours or five and a half, just minimum. So there is no interest in applying to get a job in the cafeterias. This is what I've been hearing, with some people that are recommending to apply, they're saying, "No, I want that job, forget it," you know? So to me, it's coming like, sense that it's about time to start checking it out, if we can, the budget is there, you know, to do the hiring, and, and just have this problem resolved, it's just, it's been going on for, for many years. Yeah.
Yeah, so, just to wrap it up, we can have, um, Ms. Aguiar come back after they do a, a needs assessment of the cafeterias that need upgrades-
Yes.
-and share with the board what those upgrades would be, so you'll have that knowledge. And so, they're really good questions, I think we should move on, though, in our agenda.
We do.
And we're almost at nine, and there's some really, some more heavy lifting to do tonight.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Veronica, thank you, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have-
[applause]
Next we'll have redistricting orientation.
Yep, so thank you, trustees, President Tabera, I'm gonna have introduce you Dr. Shelley Lapkoff, from Lapkoff and Gobleit, uh, demographers. So as you know, we, we completed the census last year, nationwide, and, um, that normally results into potential redistricting, and so Shelley's gonna talk to us about that process.
Thank you, Superintendent. It's a pleasure to be here. I actually helped redraw your lines ten years ago, so it's nice to revisit this. Um, a little bit about us, we've actually been doing redistricting and districting since the 1990s, and especially in Monterey County, I think we've been redistricting every school board in the, in the county. Um, we helped you move from at-large to by-district elections, and then helped you redistrict both in 2000 and 2010. I just happen to remember last time, we had a very good committee, and it worked out really well. Uh, we're currently providing redistricting services to all the school districts in the county, through the Monterey County Office of Ed. It's been very helpful. As many of you may know, the census got delayed six months, and we're really crunched in terms of getting our work done right now. So tonight, I'll talk about what is redistricting, why we need to redistrict, your current trustee areas, a little bit about the legal requirements that we follow, talk about communities of interest, a timeline, and next steps. Now, every ten years, everyone across the country is redistricting after the census is released. It's constitutional requirement that the election districts be equal in population. Um, and so everybody from Congress to local school boards needs, needs to check and see if their populations are still balanced. When we redraw lines, there are federal and state laws that we have to abide by. You need to finish the process by March 1, based on California Education Code. The new trustee areas will be in effect until 2030 census is released, so this is a once-in-a-decade task. And if by chance, when we redraw trustee area lines, the trustee no longer lives in the trustee area that they were elected from, they will serve out their term. And then when that election comes up again, then they would either have to move back, move into that election, into that trustee area, or would have to run in the trustee area that they live. But they will serve out terms, their term of office. So here is a little map of your current trustee areas. Uh, we've overlaid them with the elementary feeder districts. In our mind, that might be your major community of interest. We like to keep the feeder districts intact, if we can. Salinas City Elementary and Alisa are very large, much larger than any trustee area would be, so they're, they're divided, but, um, you can see Spreckles and Washington Union are together, and, um, Santa Rita is split, but actually, I was just playing around with the numbers, we might be able to keep them intact as we redraw lines. That would be one option that we would have. Um, and for the most part, these trustee areas use really major roads and thoroughfares, so it's easy for the, the public to understand what trustee area they're in, which is often helpful. Um, so it's, it's actually quite a nice plan that we have. However, uh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna show you in a minute that they have to be adjusted, but here are the legal requirements that we have. As I said earlier, they have to be equal in population, relatively equal in population. Uh, when we redraw lines, we have to make sure we follow the Voting Rights Act, which is to protect the ability of minority groups to elect representatives of their choice. Um, and that is somewhat balanced by a 1993 Supreme Court case, which said you cannot racially gerrymander, meaning you can't make oddly shaped districts just to maximize minority voting power. Um, and that minority groups cannot be the predominant factor in your drawing of districts. That said, we still need to protect the voting rights of minority groups, so it's a little bit of a balancing act for us, as demographers, as we redraw lines. There are state education code that, um, that we have to follow. Uh, it does not give a whole lot of guidance, but it does give some guidance about redrawing lines. And then, there's a new state law I wanted to bring up, it's called the Fair Maps Act of 2019, the city and the, um, Board of Supervisors have to follow that law, and it's very specific. It's optional for school districts, but I just wanted you to be aware of that law, because it's sort of the trend of how to go about doing redistricting. That's what the legislature has passed. They did not, however, um, they specifically did not include school districts, 'cause they thought it might be too onerous on school districts to have to follow all these laws. But I will show you what they, they do. Um, excuse me a second, my phone, uh, sorry, there's, um, a 911 call on my phone.
Lockdown.
[inaudible]. Sorry, I have a, it goes to my hearing aid. That was weird.
Oh, shortage, shortage, shortage.
Okay. So here is your current trustee area populations with the new census data. And let me explain how this works. You have a total of 185,789 people counted in your district. Ideally, each district would be one-seventh of that size, so the ideal population would be 26,541, that's the last line on the, on the table. So that's what we're shooting for. And the, what I show here is the 2020 populations for each trustee area. So for example, trustee area one is 28,466. Now, that happens to be the largest trustee area right now, with the 2020 data. It's 1,925 more people than would, would be ideal, and that is a 7.3% deviation, and that deviation is calculated by dividing 1,925 by your ideal population. So that gives us, that trustee area is 7.3% too large. Now, the-
What zip code was that?
What zip code?
It's me.
I don't know.
So that's trustee area one.
It's trustee area one.
Trustee Rubio.
93066.
Yeah, I don't know the zip codes offhand, sorry.
93906.
And it may be a combination of zip codes.
Yep.
So the zip codes can be split, or multiple zip codes may be in there as well. But all throughout the county, I mean, we were also helping the county supervisors and the city of Salinas, that northern area is, has grown more in, in Monterey County than other places. So right now, it's large. Meanwhile, trustee area four is your smallest district. It's 1,086 people less than- It's 1,086 people less than ideal. And that brings us to a 4.1% deviation. And what we do is we compare the largest and smallest trustee area, in this case trustee area 1 and 4, and we add up those deviations, and that would be 11 point, actually 4, 11.3, it's rounded down, to 11.3%. That is called the deviation. If you were 10% or less, you would not have to change your trustee areas. And in fact, we're the, we came to you last, because there's two different data sets we could use, and we were hoping that maybe with the second data set, you could be under 10%, but you were not. So you're just a little above the deviation that's allowed by law. So you must change your trustee areas, and we need to redraw the lines. So trustee areas 1 and 2 are too large, and the others are all small, but especially 3 and 4 are too small. So we're going to have to readjust the lines, and sometimes that has domino effects. So that's the situation, and that's where I'm here to report that you will need to redraw your lines. Are there any other questions about the math on that? And you're all clear that you're just not quite equal enough. It's close. Yes.
How do you go about selecting the streets, or the houses, or how do you, how do you do that? I mean, do you select this street and not that street, or this block and not that?
So we have census blocks, and that's the smallest level of geography. So we're clicking on the census blocks to form trustee areas. And we know your area pretty well, actually, after being here 30 years doing this work. And so we use major streets. And if you look at your map, like we use Main Street, we've used Acacia to go along the side, and the, between 6 and 7. Sanborn was in there, Williams Road. So we use major streets whenever we can. And we also use your feeder district boundaries if we can. Because if we could use, like, if the trustee area 1 could be Santa Rita, Graves and Lagunita, and that's one trustee area, that would be a nice boundary, because these voters then know that, it's sort of easy to identify, oh, I'm in Santa Rita's school district, so I'm in trustee area 1, for example. So I guess there's two things, is we try and look at feeder districts, or sometimes city limit boundaries, so other jurisdictional boundaries, and then we use major roads. And we use testimony from the public. If the public says, oh, this is my neighborhood, you shouldn't divide it, then we also take that into account as well, or feedback that you give us. Oh, this line really isn't, is dividing an area that shouldn't be divided.
Yes, yes, sir.
Notice they used population and voters. Not sure if you've seen that interchangeably? Or how do you determine population? Is that based on the last census? Or do you use population based on the number of voters in that area?
Yeah, I didn't mean to say voters. If I did, it has to be the data from the census. And the most recent census. And there is two data sets. I mentioned there are two data sets. And this year, I mean, not only did we have a six-month delay from the census, but then, the state said, we're going to redistribute prisoners. So for example, anyone in a California prison, whether it's Monterey County or elsewhere, they get eliminated from their prison, and they get redistributed back to their last home address. So that took an extra month. So we just got the data like a couple weeks ago. So I first checked your deviation with the census, raw census data, and then second, with the, this adjusted data for the prison population. And that, we have to use the official data. It doesn't matter if we know it's wrong, like there could be undercounts, or overcounts, or whatever, but the Constitution says we have to use, and the Supreme Court has said, we have to use the actual census data for redistricting purposes. Now, that said, we still look at voters and other information, but the balancing of the population is based on the census data. Okay. I have a couple more slides. Should I go on then? Yeah. I just want to make sure everybody understood this calculation.
Yeah.
All right. So the state law, the ed code, says to give consideration to the following factors when you're redrawing lines. You should look at the topography, the geography, cohesiveness, contiguity, integrity, compactness of territory, and communities of interest. So say the geography, that's part of where you're saying, how do you decide which street to go down? Well, we're looking for major streets, if possible, and looking at the topography. Okay, so that's the state law. And then there's optional laws from the Fair Maps Act. So I want to go into just that briefly. The Fair Maps Act actually gave the order of priority that we should use when we're redrawing lines. And this is probably a good thing for us to use for you as well. But first and foremost is federal law. Second is that the districts have to be contiguous. They have to touch. So that's pretty basic. You can't have an island off in your trustee area. Then third is communities of interest. So this got, that's the first optional requirement, is communities of interest. So that's why there's often public testimony about what that would be. Four is integrity of cities and unincorporated communities. Five is easily identifiable and understood boundaries. Six is geographic compactness. And then finally, there should be no political party considerations. So the cities and counties have to do this. This is optional for you. And then, there's a lot of requirements about hearings and public outreach. And I think Monterey County is used to public outreach, because in the past, you had to get preclearance from the Department of Justice. So we're used to doing public outreach here. So that is sort of standard for Monterey County. You do not have to do that preclearance this time. It was suspended by the Supreme Court. Okay. So then, just to talk about communities of interest, because that is emphasized now in the law, your feeder districts, I would think, would be a major community of interest to form the trustee areas. Also, recognize neighborhoods, cities, and unincorporated areas, and areas that are similar in terms of living standards, or income, educational levels, and race ethnicity. So this is another place where the minority populations can get protected, not just from the Voting Rights Act, but because they can be a community of interest as well. And if there's, at the end of the presentation, would be of interest to hear if you have other ideas about communities of interest in your district. And I just want to make a plea that we try the best we can to optimize everything, but often there are trade-offs. Now, one question is, how do you want to proceed with the redrawing of the trustee areas? Do you want to use a redistricting commission that you appoint, or do you want to do it yourself? And I have some pros and cons of that. So the advantages of using a commission is the process is transparent, and sometimes the public confidence is greater, because a commission is used. The competing interests are balanced by the commission, and commissioners can go back to their communities and explain why they chose the map they did. It helps shield you from any controversy. The meetings can be focused entirely on this one task, and the commission can receive public testimony, and it can save time for you by delegating this process. On the other hand, there's some disadvantages. There's time and effort to appoint a commission. Your staff has to expend resources to support that commission. It can be awkward if the board does not accept the commission's recommendation. And fourth, you just may want to do it yourself. That may be something that is of interest to you. If you decide to use a commission, here are some ways that people have appointed members. They can be public outreach to recruit applicants, of which you can then appoint members to this commission. You could ask community groups to suggest candidates for a commission. You could have, I know school districts are used to having parent committees. You could appoint a member from each school site. So it's really up to you. There are no requirements, other than board members cannot be on this committee, relatives of board members, and paid staff from board members cannot be on an advisory commission. But otherwise, you can appoint anyone else you like. We would suggest not having the commission too large, 5 to 12 people. And it's also good to have these meetings recorded, so they can be viewed later by the public, if you decide to go with a commission. Okay, so the timeline. We're really condensed here, because things got delayed, but we're here in October. We'd like you to decide how you want to proceed. And then, in November through February, we can draft plans for either you or a commission to review. And we'll continue to do that until a consensus is reached. And usually, there is a consensus. And then you have to complete by March 1. So the next step is to decide how to proceed. Second thing is that the Monterey County Office of Ed is getting a website together for you, and they're going to keep it up for 10 years, because that's one of the requirements of the Fair Maps Act. And even though you don't have to follow it, it's sort of good practice. So you'll have a website page up at the Monterey County Office of Ed, and it'll detail this process that you went through. And so, it's actually a good idea, because 10 years from now, it's a repository of institutional knowledge. So 10 years from now, they can look back and see what happened. And then we'll need to schedule public meetings concerning the redistricting process. Okay, so now I can entertain any other questions, if you'd like.
Question. Yes, sir.
As far as the selection process for commissioners, do they have to be within our area, or can they be outside our area?
Your trustee area, or the school district itself?
I'm sorry, my trustee area.
Your trustee area. It's, it's common for people to suggest people within their trustee area, so that you have a geographic distribution, you know, even distribution. But again, there are no rules about who you need to appoint. So it's up to you.
Yes, sir.
So you're going to give us a template, a suggestion? Is that what you're going to do, when you said, because you said you knew all the census tracts and all the stuff that you have? You're going to give us a suggestion, a starting point?
Well, what would happen is whether whoever, if you're going to have a commission, then I would go to the commission, and I would draft some plans. And I would say, here are some options. Here, here's what would be legal. If you don't have a commission, and the board does it themselves, I would come to you and say, here are these draft plans.
I got it.
What do you think?
Okay. All right. Good enough.
Anybody else?
And we're not going, I'm stuttering, sorry. We don't have a considerable amount of change, potentially.
You don't, but there tends to be a domino effect, even though you're only off by a little. It's like 1 and 2 are really close together, and then they're going to have to distribute down, and that could then have reverberations. But I haven't actually played around with it yet.
Right. So this would have to come back next meeting for the board to take action on whether you want to appoint a commission, or to do the work yourself.
Are you asking?
No, no, I'm making a statement.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Do they want to, so can they not discuss that now?
I mean, you can, you could give direction now to, to our, you know, to me, Superintendent, so that I can work with the demographers on what the next steps. If you want to appoint a commission, I'll have to get more information back to you on what that process would be like.
Patty, Patty, were you on the board 10 years ago?
Yes.
Okay, so Senator, I, myself, and Patty were on the board. And do you remember what we did? What did we do? How did we handle that?
We had a commission. Yeah, you did a bad commission. We did.
Yes, you did. I worked with him.
And how long did, what was the duration of that commission for us?
Well, it was kind of funny. I came back with them with a draft plan, and they all said yes.
It was one meeting.
One meeting. But I said, no, we have to have a second meeting, just to make sure, sleep on it. But then the second meeting was pretty easy, and then they.
And so, can I ask, would that meeting be conducted in the same way that we conduct our meetings here? Meaning that would we have community input from anyone out there? Or do you have to be community input from people that live within our trustee area? And the reason I ask that question is because our meetings have not been the way they have been in the past. They haven't been, we haven't conducted our meetings because about, you know, because of public input the way we did. We didn't do it, we haven't, we're not doing it the way we did 10 years ago. Put it that way. Is that okay?
Our meetings have not been as friendly?
Yeah. And so I'm just wondering, if we have to follow the public comment, correct? I mean, we have to follow the same kind of structure that we follow here in our meetings, right?
I believe they're subject to the Brown Act and all that.
Yes.
So it's going to be a public hearing, or public meeting.
Either, either one that we do choose.
If what?
Yes. So if the board does it themselves, it'll have to be in a regular session meeting.
Okay.
If we appoint a commission, we'll have to follow the Brown Act. So my thought is, if you want to give direction, one way or the other, tonight, so we can get started, and I'll follow up with legal counsel to make sure. If it needs to come back to next session, just to have an action item, then I'll bring it back.
Yeah, I'm not bringing that up, I'm not bringing that up to detract from any public comment. I'm just bringing that up, because it's been somewhat difficult, a difficult process for us.
Yeah, I have heard that from other school districts as well.
Okay.
And cities. Yeah, that their public has been less friendly.
So maybe you can take a poll of the board.
Yeah, let's take a poll. How do we want to handle this?
I just have a comment.
Trustee Rojas. Oh, sorry.
I don't know, he's taking a poll. Who wants to commission? I'm for the commission.
Commission?
Yeah.
Commission?
Commission.
Commission.
I don't care.
Commission.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. That's helpful to know.
And so we get to appoint someone to represent our interests on this commission?
Yeah. So I'll do what we've done in the past on this. I'll send some information out to you, for you to give me some names of people to contact.
Okay. Then we move to the next item?
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I have a quick comment for you. My district is one of the newest ones, which is District 6. Okay. And the deviation is less than 2%. Okay. Do you have an idea, when we go to the redistricting, whether I might be running against some of my favorable members? You never know. I mean.
Well, you know something, that, because if you were, we were part of the Fair Maps Act, we couldn't do that. But you're not part of the Fair Maps Act. So one possibility you could say to the commission is to keep incumbents in their current trustee areas as much as possible. To the extent possible, keep us in separate districts. If you want to give direction to the commission, that would be transparent, that everybody knows that is a criterion that would be used.
Kind of remember that happening. We did, we did say that last time around.
Thank you.
It's just that if you were sitting in a county, you could not say that, because the Fair Maps Act doesn't, you could only use it after everything else was taken.
Thank you for that info. Before I got re-elected, I was in another district. They would represent only 93905. And on this last election, they sent me. And on this last election, they sent me all the way to South Salinas. And it was kind of exciting seeing new people that I wanted, I have no idea. And, but it was, it was hard because they make it bigger south, to the south. So now I'm in south and east. So I should concentrate in east. No, just kidding. Well, thank you, you make it clear. So yeah, I'll talk to my representative.
Yes, and maybe if they, that might be a separate motion that they would vote on.
Yeah, that we did do that.
No, 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 but that's okay. I love the South Salina people because COVID-19 was hitting, and I was every single door, knocking on doors. And all those people, whether Republicans or Democrats, they said, you're the only Ocampo in Salinas, so I'm all for you. So I got elected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was good. We'll be seeing you sometime soon, next week or two, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have District Communications, Employee Organizations. CSEA or SVFT, are you all here?
So for CSEA, we have Michael Allen here on behalf of Lucy Vega.
Hello, Mike Allen, Second Vice President, CSEA. Good evening, members of the board, cabinet, and whoever's left. Classified staff had their first professional development day on Monday. This time, the focus was on our own self-care. We get so busy and are always helping out staff and students, yet we have a tendency to forget that we too also need to take care of ourselves. Thank you, Superintendent Burns and Cabinet, for your positive messages at the PD Day. CSEA also appreciates the hard work of Dr. Simon, Mr. Lynch, and their staff to help put this day on. As we all know, school districts across the country are feeling the weight of employee shortages, and classified staff continue to feel the impacts of the increased workloads. The district needs to help establish a strong classified sub-list, and CSEA is going to be meeting with HR to continue the dialogue of hiring more paraeducators and, because our students need the support. CSEA thanks the district for the support on the MOUs that are on the board packet, and it's a step in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, SVFT.
My goodness, following safety, pizza ovens, and redistricting, this is a tough act to follow tonight. Good evening, Board of Trustees. SVFT leadership would like to express our frustration with the district on their planning for big projects without including leadership or leadership of the labor unions at the beginning phases. The short-term independent studies planning has been delayed, and guess who is going to have to pick up this work when it needs to get done? It's going to be SVFT and CSEA. This should have already been done. You heard from the Alisal student reps that their attendance percentage, and it's in par with most years, being 94 and 95%. And they stated how important attendance rates are, and SVFT echoes those concerns. We look forward to finishing the planning for these short-term independent study contracts. Next, for weeks, SVFT has been hearing of problems with the student information system. We have synergy. This is where attendance is taken, assignments are recorded, and grades are saved. There is a problem, and teachers have been alerting the IT director for, about this issue. The techs at 7070 have been doing all that they can, but there is an issue, and it needs to be resolved. This disrupts everyone's workflow, I mean, everybody. You can't record attendance. Teachers struggled to put in assignments and finish grades. Graciously, the district has extended the grade period, but this is problematic. Basically, this needs to be fixed. I don't know IT. I don't know the two platforms, but there's a problem. SVFT would also like to bring to your attention that three times a year per our contract, we receive class-sized lists from each site. And these reports are a window into the district's priorities. Last week, we received the 10-week update of site reports. This shows how many students are in classes, what classes are taught at all the sites. And some sites are more balanced than others. Some sites actually practice equity, which is a focal point of this district. They give students what they need. While others unfortunately continue to build master schedules that are based on past practices that have not always addressed the needs of students. How is it that a site has a Math 1 class for newcomers, it's called Sheltered, with 31 students, while also having an upper-level math class with nine students? Or the Spanish class, that's a Spanish III class that is supposed to be for non-native speakers, but there's no place to put the newcomers? And if they're Spanish-speaking, they're putting them in the same Spanish III class, while they should be in a heritage Spanish class or a non-native speaker class to develop their language skills? To hear that there's no place to put them is troublesome. For the teacher that has to balance two diverse groups, it's troublesome. The evidence is in the data. It's hard to read these reports, and I did this weekend. It was a great three-day weekend for me. And to hear how hard our members are working to reach all of these students and help them achieve, when at some sites, the cards are already stacked against them. But we'll keep working towards developing and advocating for all students. And lastly, Thursday, we start negotiations of the full contract, and we are cautiously optimistic to work with Dr. Simon. It will be refreshing, and we know that we're going to come prepared. We are negotiating four to six o'clock, and if the board remembers, we don't negotiate during the school day anymore because we pick up the price for subs. And for years, the district was not prepared. I know from Dr. Simon's emails with agendas and priorities that the district is prepared. We hope that we are successful on Thursday. In closing, most of the audience members are SVFT teachers who have taught all day. One finished a couple IEPs, another finished grading her class papers, all the while listening and watching the work of the district. I want to thank them, Ms. Espinoza, Ms. Villa, Ms. Palmer Leff, Mr. Schooli Leff, Ms. Cleves, Ms. Johnson, and her husband. And thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you.
Okay, now we have board members. Let's start with trustee Rojas. We'll work our way down this way.
It's late in the day, no comments from me tonight.
Very briefly, according to the state, we are mandating to have all the staff vaccinated. And second of all, also, the districts are looking into increasing the salaries for subs because of the shortage of substitute teachers. And so that's it.
Are you reading that, or? I know.
Your turn.
Okay, good, good, good. I just want to say.
Yeah, I am reading this.
Okay, just, just happy to be at the school today. And, you know, I hope in the future, we get more participation from, from the people at every school. So that's, that's my hope, and that's my goal, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments tonight.
I have a comment. Where'd everybody go? Dang. Okay, well, you might want to spread this on. I've, I've gotten, several people have told me about this, and, and I actually saw one a couple days ago, and today, they kind of bothered me even more, so was the fact that, that we've been having, you know, hey, I mean, anybody can come and talk at our meetings. Anybody can. I remember my very first time when I was a student in high school, and I came and talked to the school board downtown, and we were asking for something for a single mile many years ago. But, you know, I got to say, you know, I think my wife told me about two meetings back, about a month or so ago, that, that someone came up to her and threatened her. And not only threatened her, but threatened one of our teachers, the teachers here in Alisal. And subsequent to that, I've heard about other people who happen to be young people, our students, also being threatened and bullied by people who have been coming to this board to express their opinion, probably about me and or, you know, other, the way we connect I've been thinking about this one because, you know, I know that several years ago, even though it does say 2019 at the bottom, but it feels like a long time ago that we, that our board passed Regulation Number 5131.2 regarding the issue of bullying. You know, because we were trying, we were very worried about our young people being bullied by other young people for various reasons, right? So we implemented a policy regarding bullying, anti-bullying, and subsequent, you know, actions as a result of. But I, I wanted to remind, because I know that it sounds like, from what I understand, people have been watching us on YouTube. For those of you who are still there, I would like to, to let you all know that we have a bullying policy for this school district. It doesn't talk about adults bullying young people, and it doesn't talk about adults bullying other adults. They want you to understand where our board was coming from when we approved this bullying policy, anti-bullying policy. Bullying is an unwanted aggressive behavior that involves a real or perceived imbalance of power between individuals with the intent to cause emotional or physical harm. Bullying can be physical, verbal, or social slash relational, and involves repetitive or potential repetition of a deliberate act. And there's other, other examples of the types of conduct, and I just, I think this one is kind of interesting here. Verbal bullying that includes saying or writing hurtful things such as teasing, name-calling, inappropriate sexual comments, taunting, and other threats to cause harm. I get really bothered by the fact when I hear that adults are doing this to our young people, to our students that are attending our schools. And I would hope that other people out there that happen to be listening still do too. Thank you. Trustee Felice.
No comment tonight?
No comment.
Okay, then Superintendent.
Yeah, so I have a couple comments. I'll take your time out. So I also wanted to chime in on the Classified Professional Development Day. It was well-attended, majority of it through Zoom. There was kind of, it was kind of a hybrid model where some sessions were in person as well. We know these are challenging times, so as Michael Allen stated, the sessions were focused on self-care, which was very mindful of, of the time we're in. I also wanted to share that we finished the end of the quarter one, academic quarter one for the school year, which is really a significant accomplishment considering everything that's transpired through the course of the year. My classroom visits, it's been great to see students not just back in class, but engaged, fully engaged in learning with their teachers. And even though we've had some high-profile incidents this year, many of the staff have commented about how students are very thoughtful and how they're doing their best as well to try to return to some kind of normalcy for themselves. So I'm thankful for our instructional staff, for the work they do creating engaging learning environments. Also wanted to let you know that Everett Alvarez is going through their WASC accreditation process, so I want to thank their staff and the leadership at the school for preparing their WASC review and visitation. Members of cabinet had an opportunity, myself as well, to meet with the visiting team. They were very complimentary of the work that went into the report as well, so we'll be looking forward to their recommendations. We also, Mount Toro High School is our, is a California distinguished school. As you know, that's a pretty important honor for us and for the, for the community of Mount Toro High School. Periodically, they have to reapply for that distinction, so they've just finished their application process, and they will have a team come out and visit the Toros to make sure they're continuing along their path of being more. So congratulations to them. Also wanted to share that our NJROTC program at Everett Alvarez, I want to thank the counselors, the administration, the master chiefs of the program, we have two now, for making sure we had enough cadets enrolled this year to meet the minimum requirements by the Navy. And so because of that, we will be able to continue on with the distinction of being an NJROTC program, which is a really good accomplishment for us there as well. So also wanted to share that it is Administrative Appreciation Week, so they don't get thanked enough for the work that they do, and so we're, we're planning some appreciation for them. And I believe that's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Now we have action. Can we hear a motion to approve Resolution Datte Number 21-0103 waiving the district's graduation requirements for community service class of 2023?
Still moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we have Number B, Variable Term Waiver Request. Do we hear a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by trustee Jones.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ocampo. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number C, Provisional Internship Permit Request.
Still moved.
Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Betty Assalsberg. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have informational items. A, school renaming.
So I have a little PowerPoint we're going to go through here just to give you some background. As you know, the, we've had some conversations about potentially renaming one of our middle schools in honor of Dolores Siguerta. And I know it's late, so I'll go through this quick. So just wanted to give you some background and some history on the process of how La Paz Middle School got the name La Paz Middle School to begin with. So back in, in the year 2000, the district appointed a committee, like we normally do, to go through the process to name the newest middle school. Back in March of 2000, March 28th, during that board meeting, the committee gave a presentation on the process for selecting a new name. They also presented their initial list of names to the school board. At the meeting, the school board, by consensus, and what I'm, what I'm sharing with you is in the minutes of record from back in 2000. They agreed that they would each send three names to add to the list, and they, they gave a target date, and they would bring it back the following meeting for discussion. In April of that year, during the meeting, it was recommended to take the list of nine names, which were on that list, to rank them in order of their highest preference to the lowest. which were on that list, to rank them in order of their highest preference to the lowest preference for each board member. And by consensus, the board agreed to bring back those nine names ranked. In the following meeting, they would narrow it down to five, the next meeting to three, and eventually to one. In May of 2000, which was a following meeting, during the meeting, the board ranked down to five names and they listed those in alphabetical order. And those names were Bella Vista, La Paz, La Soya, Ernesto La Soya, Oscar Perotti, and Tony Teresa. The board discussed those names and the opinions of the board varied, obviously, on those names. One suggestion was to name this school, which was the middle school, and then to use one of the other names for a future school. But there was also a concern from one of the board members that the names did not include any women. And so the board president at the time asked each to rank the names as they had, by consensus, the previous meeting decided to do, and then move the process forward to the next meeting. So at the next meeting, during the board meeting, the naming of the school was actually an action item. A motion was made to name the school Dolores Huerta. And a second motion was received at the time. So it wasn't one of the five names, but a motion was made. There was discussion and at the time the vote failed, did not get four votes for that. At that point, one of the trustees left the meeting and another motion was made to name the school La Paz. And a second motion was received. After discussion, the vote was called for and the board voted 3-3. And so the motion failed. Again, did not receive four votes. At that point, two additional trustees left the meeting and so the superintendent recommended to bring it back since there wasn't a quorum at that point. During the next school board meeting in June, it was back on as a presentation. The board discussed the process, gave their thoughts on the names, and directed the superintendent to bring it back to the next meeting for action. And in June of 2000, during that board meeting, it was an action item. A motion was made and a second to the motion received, um, to name the school Dolores Huerta. And after discussion, the vote was called and the motion failed again, 3 to 4. A motion that at that time was then immediately made to name the school La Paz and with a second to the motion, and they took a vote and it passed 4-3. So I'm just giving you that. That's in the record. That's in the minutes. And so where are we now? So about 10 years ago or so, the district obtained land for the, for a new, actually longer, for the new middle school, right, in the northeastern part of the city of Salinas. The board did go out for an architect review about seven years ago or so and selected the potential design for the new middle school. The plans were submitted to DSA for review and DSA approved the plans. So you already have approved plans for, for a middle school site of about 600 students. And then the plans are already approved as well. However, at the time, the district didn't have the finances to build the school. In 2017, as those of you that were on the board recall, you directed me to go through the process to name the new middle school. The board followed the process and the middle school number five was officially named Dolores Huerta Middle School. And if you recall, on September 23rd, the board made that official with a ceremony at the district office, right, that included Ms. Huerta. And we also have a ceremonial tree and a plaque that will go on the facility once we decide where it will go. In November of last year, we passed a bond, as you all know, the initial project list that we brought to you in the spring of 21. At that time, based on declining enrollment in the elementary districts and declining enrollment by large amounts, we discussed whether or not we even need a middle school at this point or whether or not financing with the bond could be used to make improvements at current middle schools as well as investing in larger projects, including the ROP Center. It did not mean the school would never be built. It just meant in the near future, it wouldn't be built. So we're looking maybe 10 years out. In June, the board asked about the idea of renaming La Paz since the new school wouldn't be built in the near future. And there was a sentiment from a couple trustees at the meeting that the renaming could right a wrong felt by two of the trustees who were part of the board in 2000. And in July, by consensus, the board gave direction to the superintendent to go through the process of renaming the school. And in August, we started that process. Last month in September, I met with school staff as part of that process. And here's some of the things that they brought up as a school staff. They said, no, no one in the room stated that Dolores Huerta isn't worthy of the recognition. They did ask why rush to change the name of a school that has 20 years of history? They asked why La Paz and not another school site that could be renamed? They asked, what about the two decades of history connected to students and families who attended La Paz? The school has logos and branding that are synonymous with the school's history. There's already an identity formed at La Paz. And why not wait until the next school is built or the one that's already named for her is built? They asked, do the people work here who educate students and interact with parents and community even have a say? Or is it a done deal? They also asked, could the wellness center that's being built at La Paz currently be called the Dolores Huerta Wellness Center until the new school is built? So we're also in the process of surveying parents at the school. Should have that information back fairly soon and, and students too, not just parents. And so here's some additional considerations. We do own the land, right? We do have approved plans for a small middle school. The school's already named Dolores Huerta Middle School. We could wait and build the school when it's needed. We can look at innovative instructional models to create a small school consisting of middle school and high school students. Thus, uh, we could build a new school on the land and continue with the name Dolores Huerta. And I put some small bullets here. A benefit of that is we could reduce this school, Alasa High School, by three or 400 students over time, which this school really needs that kind of relief. So with all of the, the things we've talked about with food services, having 400 less students here would be a help to that as well. We could create a, um, an environment that would be added value, focused on innovation with specific industry-aligned pathways such as ag tech, mechanical engineering, or technology, computer sciences. Some of that would also be looking at what would the timing be if we decided to do something like that? So, you know, we, we would have to redesign the building and reconfigure it to maximize space and send it back to DSA for architectural review. That's a six, nine-month process if everything's perfect. And so the main drawback to, to having that kind of innovative school would be, obviously, we would pull 50 to 60 million out of the bonds in order to build the school. It does have some benefits and I can bring you back some samples and ideas on what that would look like. So, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of background, you know, to how La Paz got named and also then where we are with Dolores Huerta. And then I'll just open it up for questions or dialogue.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Aye. Thank you for that information, Mr. Burns. In 2000, year 2000, um, everything was correct. I remember the night. We have a lot of community input. It was, it was packed. Lot of excitement naming Dolores Huerta. The CSCA were all for it. The SBFD were all for it. Mr. Moore, Mr. Egan, Mr. Masuka. So we got the support. We got the community support. But we didn't have the community support in the board members. Three to four. So we lost that. We promised, we make a promise to name one of our schools Dolores Huerta since 2000. And it's, it's a promise that it needs to be filled for those that were here before. The discussion about all the names, it was hard because according to what I believe, you know, if you're gonna name a, a school, you gotta name it with history, with people that are out there fighting for the rights of the people, democracy. So when they pushed the agenda for La Paz, I keep, I keep, I keep asking myself, what La Paz has to do with the naming of a school? Where's the legacy, where the history of this individual? I wanted it to be Martin Luther King or, but Dolores Huerta sounds pretty good. So I went with that. And every time I think back in those days, I do feel sorry because I feel that we felt our community. So now is a chance that we have to rename it and to move forward and make an honoring to that woman who is 80 something years old, pretty sick and waiting to see the naming of the school Dolores Huerta. La Paz Middle School is located in 93905. When I see the recommendation of this input of people saying, why, I wanna take the name? Why are we losing 20 years in history? Why? So much why, 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 why? And then I keep wondering back in my mind, why not? Es doble. If Santa Rita Elementary School renamed one of the middle schools after the passing of the principal and it was an action overnight by the board, they didn't receive community input. They did it within weeks. For us, it's taken us 21 years to bring this back. So it's, it's sad. It's sad for me to be still, you know, asking for the support, asking for the momentum to finalize the promise that we made to Dolores Huerta. The building of another middle school is gonna take years. Some of us will not be on the board anymore. So the hope of renaming one of our schools Dolores Huerta, I don't see it happening soon. So this is the time. This is our opportunity. If we build another middle school, I would like to see it a magnetic middle school with a different curriculum. Subsidize some of the loads from another schools, bring them over here and name it another name. But it's, it's, I feel, I feel like sad because I heard her from the administration that the community input is not totally there and the people from the middle school, they're not really 100% in that support. But then I hear from teachers, our district, saying that those people are ready for the renaming of La Paz Middle School. I've talked to my granddaughter who's attending La Paz Middle School. She's in the leadership class. They're all ready for it because they know who's the lot of work they say about. La Paz Middle School, what is that meaning? Peace be with you. No legacy, no history. So, Mr. Tabera, I'm all in support of the renaming La Paz Middle School to Dolores Huerta. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
In our schools, we have the schools that are named after local community leaders. Everett Alvarez, Oscar Loyah, Jesse Sanchez, and just recently John Gutierrez, who gave a lot of contribution to our community. So we have a lot of leaders here and that, you know, are worthy of, uh, receiving a school after their name. For example, Salsam Middle School has Prudencia Garnica. She dedicated so much of her lifetime into Elsasam Middle School, a retired teacher. And that's the kind of people we wanna honor and recognize. The only concern is, um, if, if the community, uh, votes and decides in the majority and I support them to change La Paz to Dolores Huerta. When the other school is built, the middle school, that was officially approved back in 2017 by the previous board. And my concern is, are we gonna have two Dolores Huerta schools? Or can we, uh, change the one that was officially approved or rescind that one?
So you have a couple of things. So when we went through the process to name high, middle school number five, we reached out to her family to make sure she would receive that honor, right? Which I think is appropriate. You, you wouldn't wanna just put somebody's name without their, without their blessing. So if the board decides this is the direction you wanna go, we'll reach back out to make sure they're okay with us switching the names to another school. And we can do that now. So you're not taking action tonight. Yeah. So, but you wouldn't have two Dolores Huerta middle schools, no.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanted to clarify in the PowerPoint presentation. You mentioned that, um, a survey of, it sounds like staff and students at La Paz is, is in the process to get their input on, um, a potential renaming. Is that, like, when would that come back?
Uh, we should have that this week. I know, Marcos Cabrera was working with the principal to get that back this week. Yeah.
Okay. I, I, you know, don't have any objection. I have a lot of respect for Dolores Huerta. I just feel, it feels funny to make a top-down decision for a whole school community without at least considering their thoughts and feelings about it.
Yeah. We, you know, when we bring it back, if, if the board directs me to bring it back as action, then we'll bring in all the data as well. Um, and I can get that to you in advance to take a look at.
You know, in a sense, I mean, I was one of the ones that was there and I did actually walk out of that meeting out of disgust. We had that entire summer, that entire summer, all these grandpas, grandpas, they were coming in to our board meetings downtown. And that one just happened to be at La Paz. But grandparents and grandmother, grandmothers and grandfathers had been coming in and talking about, telling the board, back then it was three of us, three, three brown faces, you know, out of seven. And, and, and we had these grandparents coming in week after, other week after. I mean, three and four people would come up and ask us to please consider doing that and take it into consideration. All the people that lived, you know, that lived in a, in, in one, in one part of town that's really, um, pretty, uh, negatively impacted financially. And then the other side of the street, that is, but these people, they wanted their daughters and sons to have what the people across the street have. You know, and, 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 and from that community, knowing full well that community and, uh, knowing that they had gone through that. And then, and then, you know, with, with Caesar Chavez right next door to this new high school that I hadn't, I didn't know what the hell was going, heck was going on. I mean, I, that was one of my very first meetings. But I did appreciate the fact that people had come that lived in that area, retired campesinos, retired people that were living on, 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 on their retirement money from the United Farm Workers, coming in and asking us, would we consider doing that? Would we consider doing that? You know, and I think about people in the past, you know, who we named school after. Well, you know, we wouldn't be sitting up here, none of us would be sitting up here in our districts had it not been for the work of Dolores Huerta and Caesar Chavez working for the Community Services Organization in the 1950s and 60s, registering people to vote in the city of Salinas and the city of Gonzalez, the city of Solida, the city of Greenfield, and the city of King City. That's why the United Farm Workers was so darn successful in this area during the 1970s when I was still a kid. I know exactly for the work that they did. I know exactly the work. I know exactly why, why when she was sitting up there at our meeting that we had downtown, she recognized people that had, had asked me, can I go? Can I go? Could I go sit there and see if she still remembers me? And she did. She did after 30 and 40 years remembering these people. They were darn organized for UFW. And I thought, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm torn, you know, I, you know, if we get a very favorable response to this, to this, um, um, inquiry, you know, I, you know, as a board, we can, we can still move it forward. And, and if we get, if we get a, a good response, I think we can, we can pull it back later on. I mean, we, we've done that in the past with other issues. But, you know, like, this is a very emotional issue for a lot of us in, in these Salinas because a lot of people, a lot of people that are older than me and they're 80s and 70s like Dolores' age now.
91.
Oh, huh? She's 91? They're tabestas. They were there when I was a kid. You know, I mean, I mean, I mean, I was, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the kids from Alasa. You know, I graduated 50 years ago, 50 years ago. And during that 50-year time period, I had involvement with UFW and I had involvement with, with that woman and with Caesar Chavez as a kid, you know. And I, you know, when I was their age and were a little bit younger. You know, uh, that hurt, that hurt us. That hurt me. And I know it hurt Sandra and I, and I know. And I know it hurt Sandra, and I know it hurt Ernesto, those three of us that were there that went through that. And, I mean, I would, I'd be totally down to have a brand-new school, a state-of-the-art school for her, but I want her to see it, when she's still alive. And if, at the rate we're going, we're not gonna get there, you know? But if there's something else we can figure out, and maybe we should go talk to her in Delano or in Bakersfield. Maybe we should go talk to her, Sandra, and see what she thinks. I mean, because, I mean, this is a real dilemma.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. President. I think you're, and I are feeling excited tonight, so we're showing so much emotions. But I think after we, you know, the superintendent will bring back this item for, you know, approval. I can feel the consensus on the board, and that's, to me, is pleasurable.
I know he's trying to figure something out. I know we, you know, I mean, we have, we have at our disposal the ability to figure something out, you know? You know, I don't know, whatever you guys think. I mean, I would, for the most part, I trust you. I would trust whatever you wanna do. I mean, you kind of know how Tavera thinks about it, you know? I think we understand what, how Sandra thinks about it. You know, it's like one of those, you gotta be there, you had to have been there to be to feel it. You know what I'm saying? It's like, you know, you had to be there to feel it. But I don't know.
So you want me to bring it back next time for action?
I would, yeah. Is that okay?
We need to have it back, I think, for an action item.
I just wanted to make a comment. You know what? I liked you, but I would like to hear from the public. And I think that we should talk to her about that and, you know, get those moving pieces out of the way, and then see what the community feels. I, you know, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna also shove something down, you know, on the people here from the top bottom, you know, from the top to the bottom. So I do wanna hear some input from the community here.
This is very important.
Yeah, it is. It is. And then, you know, a small thing that I thought about, I guess, this is a small thing, that the people that have their plaque on the school, what do you do with that? You know, it's a small thing, but it's very symbolic, right? And then, does that mean another board can come in here and, you know, we're gone and then they turn around and change it again? I don't know.
Yeah?
Well, yeah, that's it. Those are the problematic things that, you know, I don't know if I would want that done to me. So I gotta have a little empathy for those people, you know, that even if you don't agree with them, they were still voted in, they were doing what they thought was the right thing, and, you know, now we're stepping them off to the side. I don't know.
Okay, so I'll put it on as an information item again, and I'll bring in the data, and hopefully we can hear back from her, her foundation or her directly on whether she's okay with that.
Yeah.
And I'll bring that information back before, and then we'll give time for public to give input, and then bring it back in November for a vote. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't finish it, you know, Dolores and Cesar Chavez, they both did voter registration in the 60s, you know? And if they hadn't have taken that first step for us in our area, we wouldn't be sitting here in districts right now. We wouldn't, you know? They did contribute.
I guess, Mr. President, I guess the idea of making this a reality in her life, I would be happy. And if one day I'm gone from the board and somebody comes and changes the name, or at least she would be in heaven, but we did it. We make it happen, so.
I have a question just to ask you that we hurried up to get her here to do the ceremony for the new, for the new middle school number five there, knowing full well that, you know, because of her age, I mean, you know, there's a possibility, you know, she could go away from us. So we did all that. Had we begun the school, would it be done by now, given all the steps that have to be done with both DSA, with the money, with the bonds, with the actual breaking ground and all that? Would it be done by now? Would it have been done? I mean, I, you know, I'm asking you for that answer because I'm thinking if the possibility of, you know, we want her there, but the reality is, you know, we're fighting time and on something like that, would the school been? And I have a follow-up. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So at the time, when the board wanted to move quickly to honor her, the district had $8 million to build a middle school that was projected at $44 million.
Eighty, we had 80 million?
No, eight.
Eight million. You okay?
Yeah, eight. And so we didn't have the finances to build the school at that time. If you have the finances to build the school, you're talking with the plans already approved for the school, probably two and a half, three years, depending, if everything goes right. Shovel to keys, yeah.
So we did, because we didn't have the money back then.
Correct.
But now we have it because we passed the bonds last year.
Correct.
So we'd have the money. So we're still two and a half, three years away, even on that plan back then.
Correct.
Right? So I don't know. I mean, you know, if that's the case, you know, if, you know, you were talking about, you know, the magnet school, if we could do something that, not because of her, but because if it's needed, you know, if it's needed and we need to do it, not just to do it because, you know, we need to give a building to somebody, nothing like that. I don't know if that's, that's a possibility. I know you said about declining enrollment, but the schools are overcrowded. They just are, regardless of any of this stuff. So I don't know if we can alleviate some of that with the new school. I don't know. I mean...
I agree with that line of thinking. But, you know, you know, our district, we have done some things that we never thought we could ever do. We passed a bond at the height of a pandemic.
I know.
You know, we passed a bond with little to no information going on to our voters, okay? The United Farm Workers organized campesinos in the San Joaquin Valley with cars, with $5 worth of gas, people jumping in cars, you know, they did things that people have never been able to do. They can't do it. They could talk about him, they could talk about her, they could say whatever, but they can't do what they did. That's why people remember them.
We're in a position that we might have the money to build a new, a new, a new building that can serve the purposes of the students and also have her name as opposed to, you know, taking something away that's there, and so...
To pay tribute.
Yes.
To the impossible.
Yeah, yeah. Listen, I don't like to disagree with anything you're saying. I'm just saying that if we have the money and we can effectively use it, and, you know, it's, it could settle a lot of things, but again, you know, I don't know. I mean, if you really think about it, because the timeframe for her, for that school being built, like you said, the money wasn't there. Now that the money is there, that still is happening. We have the money now. We have the plans. I don't know how much more they'd have to be modified. I don't know if you can build a school where you can leave infrastructure there to add to it, as Phil said, that he doesn't think the population's gonna go down. I don't think so either. But that said, you know, to leave, leave infrastructure in place to add on without having to add on portables like we do all the time, you know, where you can leave things in place already, I don't know if that's a possibility, but, I don't know, just a thought, you know?
Yeah, let me, let me bring that information.
It's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me bring the information back to you next meeting, the data from the surveys, and then what her family feels about changing a school's name. They may say they don't wanna do that, right? So they may say, "Let's wait." So let me bring you that information back, because that would have an impact on your decision-making.
Oh, for sure.
And if we move forward with, I'm gonna still look into innovative school ideas. I do think we have an opportunity to remove, I mean, to change enrollment patterns here.
Yeah.
No matter, if we could put 50 cafeteria staff here, there's still gonna be 3,000 kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we have to figure that process out.
Yeah.
And if we look at our enrollment trend, Alasa High School continues to be up in enrollment, and La Paz Middle School is up in enrollment compared to our other middle schools. So obviously, this is the geographic area where enrollment is stable, and the school, the property we own is out here. So I'll bring that information back to you.
Thank you.
I like trustee Rojas' recommendation. I think we should move forward in the renaming of La Paz to Dolores Huerta and beginning the construction of another middle school. Because we're running against time, age, and sickness. So that is my concern. If we were to wait until built, the school, who knows? She might not be with us no more. So this is why I'm pushing to rename La Paz to Dolores Huerta.
So we're gonna bring the issue forward in our next board meeting, right? Or if something happens, well, what's happening at the next board meeting, right?
I'll put it on as an information item again for the next board meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Number B, request to name Alsa Salsam Middle School athletic field. We're gonna be bringing that one forward too, right?
So you're all, you're all okay with us bringing that forward for discussion to name the athletic field? I just need direction from you tonight.
Yes, I am.
To do that.
I am.
Yeah? Okay. Yeah? Yes? Okay. So I'll bring that back here. I'll have the family come give a presentation on what their request is, and then that'll be an information item, and then down the road, we'll bring it back for action.
Good.
Okay. Number, would you also be sending out a survey for the parents and the staff members at the school to get input from them?
We definitely can do that, yes.
Yeah, okay, we could do that also.
Yeah.
Okay. Number, anybody else on that one? Okay. Number C, first reading of board policy number 35, 351, God, 3511.1, integrated waste management. Is that a paper shredders or?
No.
Oh, no? Okay. Questions, comments?
None.
Okay. First, number D, first reading of board policy number 7211, developer fees. Questions or comments? Okay, moving on. E, use of school facilities, board policy 11, no, wait, 1330 and AR number 1330.
So just wanna give you some information on that. So trustee Rojas requested this as an agenda item. Several of you agreed to put this on. In this information item is the recommended changes to the policy and regulation. I would suggest that you all take a look at it between now and the next meeting, and that we have a discussion about it at the next meeting. So take a look at the items that are underlined in blue. Those are additions and things that are crossed out. Those are recommendations from CSBA as well as our practices in the district. So take a look at it. I know it's running late, and we do need to spend a few minutes at least having a discussion about that.
We do. Okay, thanks, sir. Number F, quarterly report on Williams uniform complaints, quarter one. Questions, concerns?
No.
Nobody? Okay. Consent items, we hear a motion to approve consent. Moved by trustee Ocampo, seconded by trustee Rojas, and in discussion?
No.
Nope.
No discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Future agenda items. Reference, agenda master planning guide. Have you guys all looked at that? All okay with that one? Okay. Number 12, future board meetings, October 26 and November 9.
Just a reminder, next meeting is a student achievement meeting again with high schools, and it'll be at the boardroom.
Very good. Do we hear a motion to adjourn? Moved by trustee Ocampo, seconded by trustee Jones. All in favor of the motion, or discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. See you guys next time around.